The January tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh two P M. I'm going to ask our new councilwoman, Katrina Manning, to do the invocation, please. And I would like for our new treasurer and our new city clerk to jointly lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Well, do we actually have, you're gonna defer to the pastor that's present?
Yes, please.
Okay, so she'll be deferring to the pastor that's present, and if you ladies could still lead us in the pledge of allegiance jointly, please. Which pastor is present?
Pastor Greg, I can see you in the back over there, please. Step up to the podium.
Yeah. Councilwoman Katrina Manning will do it next meeting. I wrote it down already. You need to get it. Right, sir.
Okay, let's bow our heads. Father God, thank you so much for this wonderful day. We ask you to bless everybody here. Thank you for the city. Thank you for everyone who's come today, their families, their friends, all the people that make this a really, really wonderful place to be and to live. We ask your blessing on this new year. There's lots of issues that are gonna come up in everyone's life. We pray you draw us close to you and that we know you more and deeper and we'd be drawn into a better relationship than ever before. Thank you for your kindnesses and this wonderful life we all have. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All members are present up here, but Madam Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
I sure can. Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Angie Reyes English?
Here.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Here.
Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Our first item tonight is a presentation. Chief Tomatani, can you please proceed, sir? Where are you?
Councilmembers, elected officials, city staff and attendees, good evening. A couple of months ago, I had the pleasure of recognizing some members of our community services department staff for rendering medical aid to a person in distress at the Ainsworth Sports Center. And that incident and that presentation reminded us that we've been remiss since the beginning of the pandemic, going back to March of twenty twenty, in recognizing our own police department staff for rendering similar medical aid to persons suffering from life-threatening injuries or medical conditions. I assure you, the number of police officers here tonight is only because we're recognizing them. Nobody's in any danger here, okay? So since March of twenty twenty, we have twenty-seven officers from our Hawthorne Police Department where we have documented that they engaged in lifesaving actions in the course of their duties. Those twenty-seven officers have administered potentially lifesaving interventions on members of the public, including the administration of Narcan to help persons suffering from an opioid or fentanyl overdose survive, to bleeding control methods like tourniquets and seals for people suffering from traumatic injuries. This is a huge progression for our police department. When I got hired, our officers used to wait for trained medical personnel to arrive on scene. Those would include E M Ts, paramedics and firefighters. Now, a significant amount of our police officers are E M Ts. Four of our police officers are certified paramedics, and all of our police officers are trained on lifesaving interventions. At our request, the Hawthorne Community Television has prepared a video which shows footage of several of these lifesaving interventions. They vary in nature as our officers never truly know what situations they're going to encounter in the course of their duties. We'll see incidents ranging from Narcan to the application of tourniquets to stop life-threatening traumatic bleeding. So there is a little bit of a warning here. Some of the video is very graphic in nature. So if that's going to bother you, I would suggest averting your eyes and not watching the video. But if you could pay attention to either the screens on either side of the council chambers here.
Just stay there, relax.
Hey, ma'am, are you shot? Hey.
She's shot somewhere.
Yeah, I got it.
Relax, relax. Vanessa, I'm gonna have to rule you, okay, because I have to do the same thing in my back.
Get a tourniquet. Hey, give me shears!
Get a tourniquet.
Yep.
Stand by on the left.
Yeah, he's breathing.
Starting to come back a little bit. There we go! No, you're fine, you're fine. Lay down. You're fine.
Do you remember what he was wearing? We want him to kind of kiss this guy, but you gotta give me some info, so we know it's important.
Hey, can you hear me at all? Yeah. Hey, sir, it looks like three gunshot wounds, two to the chest with one exit wound. Both those have chest seals and then one to the face.
Nothing on his head, man. I checked his head pretty good.
Ten's on that side. It's on that side. It's here, it's here, it's here. Yep, it's gonna hurt, okay? Just relax. I know, I know, I have to, I have to, okay?
Wait, wait, wait.
Calm down.
I played back the video and I looked at the suspect vehicle, a four-door gray sedan of some sort.
Breathe, my man.
You're doing all right, man.
You're good. You're good, my man.
All right, keep breathing for him.
Yep.
Do we have a dose of Narcan on board yet?
We got two on board.
Standby.
Two so far.
Yeah, it's gonna hurt, man, but it's gonna stop the bleeding, okay?
So we recognize that a lot. We absolutely recognize that a lot of that video is very difficult to watch, but that is an important skill set that did not exist in your police department if you go back further than five years. So we've been pushing that skill set out to our officers. And of the twenty-seven officers that we're recognizing tonight, and I won't call them out by name because that would take too much time, one of those officers in particular has been involved in seven separate interventions since the beginning of twenty twenty. So that tells you the frequency with which our police officers and our professional staff members are faced with these types of situations. We're very excited tonight, in addition to that, to announce that we're now ready for what we refer to as Phase Two of our tactical medicine program. As administered by our medical director, police officer and emergency room physician, Joe Nakagawa. Yes, he's a police officer and he is a medical doctor, one of the biggest underachievers I've ever met in my life. On Friday, March twenty-fourth, our training unit with Dr. Nakagawa will be offering the Stop the Bleed class, and those are many of the interventions that were depicted on this video, to members of the public. As a result of limited space, we will require members of the public to register online via the police department website. That online registration will be up and running within the next two weeks, so just monitor our social media and our police department website, and we encourage everyone who has no scheduling conflicts again on Friday, March twenty-fourth, from six to eight P M at the Memorial Center. And those individuals that are registered for that event will also receive an equipment bag with several of the lifesaving interventions in that bag, and that comes at no cost to the city or the department as a result of funding from L.A. County that we've received. Twenty-seven police officers that were involved in multiple incidents, and I think twenty-three are here tonight. So if I could please ask our police staff to stand up if you're on this list for a group recognition here, I'd appreciate it. I think I can speak on behalf of the city and certainly on behalf of myself. It's your actions that make me proud to be a Hawthorne police officer and to be a member of this organization. Thank you. In the interest of time, we're gonna give them their lifesaving awards out in the foyer, and if I could ask if Eric Chavez is here or anybody who would potentially be able to go outside and take a photograph, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief, and goes beyond saying that it was very impactful, the lifesaving techniques and the training. No one, not just anybody can do that, and it takes special training, dedication and sacrifice. I wouldn't know what to do. I would freak out, all those scenes that I saw, so congratulations and thank you for your service and sacrifice. To the chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you very much. Like I said, you know, Hawthorne PD, one of the finest in the nation, and those videos shows the proof that we could be on CNN, on Discovery Channel, showing how our department, your department, our department, you guys are saving lives instead of taking lives. You know, all this bad publicity out there, this is an example of a fine police office, police department. You know, when you guys save life, you know, this video, you know, give me goosebumps, right? Because you also put your life in line of duty, you know. Even your health, right, dealing with all those blood and potential harm away. So again, you know, my head goes to you, all of you, that I'm so proud to all, every single office in the Hawthorne PD. So God bless you and be safe out there and continue to save lives. Thank you very much.
To the chair. Thank you so much for the presentation and thank you for all of you being here. We recognize all your efforts and all that you're doing in the city of Hawthorne on not only keeping people safe, but keeping lives living. So thank you so much for the hard work that you do. I also want to remind the residents that whenever the city is offering these types of services, whether it be CPR courses, which I took the last course, it was an eight-hour course just recently, just last year, to our blood drive, all efforts are important and would love more participation from the community. And if you're out there in the community and you see the community outreach trailer, we thank you for that as well, because that's bringing services and information to the community that's very valuable. But to your families, to your loved ones that are here tonight with you, in recognition, we appreciate you all and thank you so much for what you do for the city of Hawthorne.
To the chair.
The fact that there's twenty-seven of these awards that are given out is just an enormous deal, like that's a big deal. And that says a lot about the culture of our police department and the training in our police department. And so I want to, you know, give my hats off to all of you guys. Thank you, guys, for your hard work and your contribution to keeping our community safe. Thanks.
To the chair. I am so excited to be a part of this city of Hawthorne because of you. First, it was coffee with a cop, the ride-alongs, and now we have this. You guys make our city so proud, not just locally, but nationally. You continue to be innovative and do things that other cities should be modeling after you. So I am so proud. I am so honored to be here, serving you and you serving our residents. Continue to do the work that you're doing. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. We'll move on with regular city business. Moment. It's heavy. All right, Madam Clerk, the guidelines for oral communications, please, ma'am.
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
Okay. I have three cards. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Just hang out? We're gonna call you to go up. Joseph Gumlick? Gumlick or Mr. Gumlick? Gumlick, okay, sir.
Okay, good evening. My name is Joseph Gumlick and I live in the Ramona tract. And I would like to take a brief moment to just give the usual congratulations on the start of a new year and the start of the new terms we're seeing here in the city of Hawthorne. To briefly continue on the trend of lifesaving, I would like to just state that traffic deaths are preventable deaths and that the city of Hawthorne can be making steps to prevent the early loss of life. On that note, I am glad to see notions such as speed bumps being on the agenda tonight, and I am generally in support of more traffic calming throughout the city of Hawthorne. Moving on to my more specific comments on bicycling within the city of Hawthorne, I will mention that due to the state of California and despite the inaction of this council, it is now lawful for me to ride my bicycle within the city of Hawthorne. The requirement to have a bicycle registration is no longer valid, and so I'm very glad to see that. And I am here to specifically talk about the bike lanes along Hawthorne Boulevard. I have previously highlighted the intersection of Hawthorne Boulevard with El Segundo Boulevard, which is the only intersection between the bike lanes of the city and the only east-west bike route in the city. So it is a crucial intersection for this city's bicycle network and is currently one of the worst for me to ride my bicycle through. I have asked the city to explore, you know, a complete redesign of this intersection to take into account the cycling needs. However, tonight, I am specifically focusing on the southbound bike lane, the right-turn-only lane that is present on the northern side of the intersection. There is a bike lane on Hawthorne Boulevard continuing south that just disappears hundreds of feet prior to the intersection. This bike lane appears to direct cyclists directly into a lane that is marked as right-turn-only. This is potentially putting cyclists that wish to continue straight southbound into an illegal situation if the city does not permit bicyclists to continue straight through this right-turn-only lane. The far side of the intersection also appears to be set up for expecting cyclists to go straight through this right-turn-only lane. The city has several small actions that it could do in a relatively short time span to rectify the situation. Namely, there are markings of sharrows on the road that currently stop prior to the beginning of this right-turn-only lane. The California Traffic Design Guidelines would permit the city to put sharrows inside the right-turn-only lane and thus make it clear that bicycles can continue straight through this lane. It would also provide an important positioning information to cyclists. This is not just an aesthetic thing. The city traffic engineers should decide whether or not the lane is wide enough to permit the cyclist to be side-by-side with a car attempting to turn right. It should not be up to the cyclist to try to make such safety decisions. Finally, the city could also just, on the sign that says right-turn-only, put a sign that says except bikes. That is also valid in the state of California for the city to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gordon Michael Migo? Sir, Mr. Gumlick, did you, no, from there, did you send those pieces of information to our staff? Or you're just making, want us to make a note of it from the dice? Okay, thank you. Gordon Michael Migo?
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year to you. Hope you had a great Christmas and all. Topic tonight, hospitals, medical center, Hawthorne, California, nine oh two five oh. Outline of a proposal for new facilities. Location, the eighty acre side of the former RFK Medical Center between Ramona and, you know, avenues and one hundred sixteen to one hundred eighteen streets. And it would be part of the Medical and Social Services District up to Hawthorne Boulevard, includes other medical facilities. Type, regional nonprofit entity that is operated under a public and private partnership. Board of directors, owners, investors, medical executives, government officials and community leaders. Services, full range of healthcare, including emergency room and trauma unit. Design, city-of-the-art buildings would replace old structures that are not compliant with earthquake standards. The exception could be the new multi-story tower on the west side that could be completed. Funding, public construction and/or operation. Federal, there's Departments of Health and Human Services, Homeland Security and so on. On state level, there's a California Health Facilities Financing Authority, or C H F F A, that provides for construction of hospitals. Los Angeles County, Measure B, account for emergency room and trauma units at public and private hospitals. Cities Hawthorne, England, Landale, Gardena, El Segundo, Manhattan Beach and so on, would form a multi-jurisdictional authority to obtain money from public and private sources. Examples of regional communication center, the R C C here in Hawthorne, Beach Cities Health District, B C H D. Funding, private construction and/or operation. Hospitals, owners of existing facilities such as Kaiser, Torres Memorial, Providence, UCLA and so on. Medical groups, ACE, ACT Minister, Healthcare Partners, there's a new name, L.A. Community Care, Surgeons of the Earth and so on. Corporations, SpaceX, Northrop Grumman, Boeing Company, Raytheon, Chevron, Mattel, Targa, Costco, Home Depot. Foundations, Annenberg, Chen Shun Xiang, James Irvine, RFK Memorial, California Community, Magic Johnson and so on. Real estate, Guy Hocker and Bill Hassan, who have owned the site of the former RFK Medical Center since February seventh, two thousand and seven. Acknowledgements, donors will be honored for their contributions on Walls of Fame in granite stone. Top donors will have naming rights to buildings, new ones, that is. And Hawthorne, the quality of life in our community will be improved and, excuse me, the stature of our city will be enhanced. We must join together to make this a reality. It's imperative considering our times. I might note that in the past couple of decades, we've gone down from twenty-four major hospitals down to eight in L.A. County. And St. Vincent's, that, okay.
Thank you, sir. Jessica Falls, Jessica Ellis, I'm sorry, I read it incorrectly. Jessica Ellis.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time. I was asked to come here today on a brief procedural matter. So I'll be short today, but would love to come back at another point to talk more about our services. My name is Jessica Ellis from Sentinel Youth Services, speaking on agenda item number seven. Our agency provides free services to the community of Hawthorne for families in need. Leave some brochures and business cards behind. I'm coming here today because we've had a long partnership with the city of Hawthorne, and the city has, over the years, appointed members to serve on our board. Due to some updates in nonprofit governance laws, five oh one C threes cannot have appointees to the board, so we'll be transitioning out of that process, but want to maintain, all of our services will maintain strong in the city. We'll be switching to an advisory board situation later this year, early next year, and we'll be circling back to get appointees from the city to the advisory board to continue that strong relationship of ensuring our services are robust in the city and representing the needs of families here. In the meantime, our staff are available to come out to events or public, anything public where you want to get more information out about our services to families. So again, you can just be in touch with anything we need, and again, there's no charge to any families for any of our services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carla Vasquez?
Before I start, I would like to know if there is a way I can present a small and short presentation?
We would have prepared, you have it prepared ahead of time, so we're gonna have to we can't make that accommodation at this moment, so.
It's completely okay.
Do you have a thumb drive that you want to plug in there?
Yes.
Right. Try plugging it into the computer, please. All right, in the meantime, I'm gonna have Olivia Valentine come up. Ma'am? See if that pops. Do we have staff to help her, please? Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and elected officials. Happy New Year and congratulations to the newly elected officials. I know you are excited about hitting the ground running, and I want you to know that I am available to assist you wherever I am needed. On that note, I would like to address agenda item number seven, wherein you are considering placement on various boards and commissions. I have been on the board of Los Angeles West Vector Control since twenty fifteen, and I would like to continue to represent Hawthorne on that board. I have been on the board of K H H R since its inception, and I would like to continue to represent Hawthorne on that board. Neither of these boards require that the member be an elected official. I also want to support the formation of a business collaborative division, which you also have on the agenda. I think it is important to show Hawthorne businesses that they have the council's support and have a strong focused division dedicated to providing them with information and resources to help them thrive. They should also have a voice on the collaborative. I support that effort. And finally, I would like to recognize the Hawthorne Police Department on the occasion of Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, which is celebrated on January ninth, to show gratitude to the officers who have dedicated their lives to serving their communities. And we saw earlier that our police department deserve any recognition that the public can provide. Our HPD makes us proud every day of the year and deserves to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, the lady would like to have a demonstration as part of a communication, First Amendment communication towards us. Is there any way we can accommodate her? Is there any way we can accommodate her? Displaying whatever she needs to display?
I would have to call staff up. Are you willing to wait a few minutes for staff to come up?
Can you do this without this, ma'am?
Um, yes, I can also, I can also just send it as an email and I can just present it from here.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, let's just do that, please. Thank you.
No, it's completely okay. I can't, um.
Yeah, please.
And distinguished mayor, mayor pro temp, council members, city clerk, treasurer, and attendees, my name is Carla Vazquez, and I have supported the leadership of the city clerk food giveaway located in the Hawthorne City Hall for the past few years. The city clerk's food giveaway has a tremendous benefit to our community. Just to name a few, it increases community engagement. As a former Hawthorne High School student and current UCLA student, it creates a constant volunteering opportunity for our students, not only high school students, but also our community college and for your university students, as well as other member, other community members. They can use this as an opportunity for their college applications, scholarship applications, to seek higher education and to, when they give back to our community. We are also a multicultural program where we give back, back to our community members, all ages, no distinction of social class or race, or any language barrier, creating a diverse environment in our city. We also like, we also support families economy. We provide many low-income communities with convenient ways to balance nutrition that they can, they can, they cannot always afford. We hope that with our support, many families have to not worry as much about essential necessities to have a balanced diet, such as vegetables and fruits that we provide every two weeks. This supplies mean to afford healthy food while also fighting hunger and the poverty in our community. Besides that, we also acknowledge there is a lot of homeless around our area, and they also come to our event to receive food that they can, it can help them within their current circumstances. We have a linear progress that can always, can help decrease the struggles of our community and what our community members face. We hope that in 2023, we will have a duplicate of numbers as the interest about the food giveaway and how it increases every week. Every week, we receive many notifications about people asking, since the necessity, necessity is always increasing. And we hope that our food giveaway can supplement our community's needs. Beyond our engagement with the community members, we have collaborated with many organizations as the American Heart Association, the Southware Carpenters, the LAX Hawthorne Land Extruder Club, Grupo Con decisión, SBCC, Community Empowered Program, and Sanctuary of Hope, Buena La, and others. We also, we're also proud to represent the City of Hawthorne core values by showing frequent examples of innovation, integrity, and respect to our community. We invite you to come and experience what we as volunteers and community members greatly appreciate and support from this giveaway. The city clerk's food giveaway is a great proof of what the City of Good Neighbor means.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, if, if your presentation was, included a lot of visuals, feel free to present this at the next meeting as well, okay? If you have the time. And kind of come 15 minutes earlier so our staff could plug everything up. Thank you. Thank you for your service, and thank you to the rest of the students and youth who've been helping and were helping. City Clerk Emeritus, Paul Jimenez, so thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to make comments to the city council? Okay, if there's anybody else, please form a line. We just need to see how many people deep we have this. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Reverend Hendricks. I'm with Commissioner Barbara Hendricks, but I'm not speaking for her. I'm speaking for me. I come to say to Katrina Mannings, congratulations on your appointment. It's a wonderful treat to look at your face and know how well you behave. Thank you and God bless you, and I hope to see you doing such great work as I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, friends and family and neighbors, and everybody else in the area that cares about Hawthorne. I would like to give an update on some of the things that are having to do with the veterans' events and the veterans and their family members in Hawthorne. But before that, there's an issue that I'm concerned about that is on your agenda for tonight, and that is Agenda Item Number Seventeen. And I would like to address some concerns that I have about that. At the last meeting, after everyone was sworn in and many of the people in the audience had already left, there was some discussion among you and a request for a staff report to be presented today. And the issue that was brought up was the possibility of dismissing every single one of the commission members on all six of the commissions, having everyone reapply and basically starting from ground zero. There are currently 25 commission members across the 20, across the six commissions. Ten of the members across those commissions have been serving for eight years or more. The reason that I bring that up is because there seems to have been some stuff going on pertaining to the commissions, and I think there's a communication gap, and I think there's a way to bridge it, and I'd like to ask your help on doing that. Last year, you had an agenda item on the meeting of April 13th, 2021. I don't have the agenda item number on it, but the resolution was number 866, no, excuse me, 8268. And it was a resolution of the City Council, the City of Hawthorne. And among other things that were in this particular agenda bill, there was a establishment of an eight-year term limits on all of the commissioners, and it was retroactive. There's also within that bill instructions that letters were to be sent out to the affected commissioners, and I know from my own position, I am now over eight years, I never received any kind of a notice. So again, this was signed by then-City Manager Eric Lee and then-City Attorney Russell Mihara. The bill number is Resolution 8268. Have copies of it here if you need to see it. So I don't know if that's something that kind of got lost in the works with the change of personnel and COVID going on. This bill was passed during a meeting that was online only and after public comment, so none of us would have had the opportunity to make public comment at the online meeting on that. So I just want to point that out. As far as the issue that is going on with tonight on Item Seventeen, there was a request for a staff report, and there are a couple of things on the staff report that I would like to point out, and of course, this is all available on the website. Under the Veterans Commission, it makes a mention that there is no mission statement, and that is not correct. We do, may I please finish? This is important.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
You have to, you have to compress it. You got like 30 seconds.
Okay, very quickly. On the report for today, it says that we have no mission statement. We do. It's on the city website. It's been there since it was put in place many, many, many years ago. And the last thing that I want to bring up is my suggestion on how to take care of this communication gap that's happening. I would strongly suggest and ask the council to consider having a public meeting, properly noticed under the Brown Act, where all of you are here and all of the commission members have an opportunity to meet and have a sit-down discussion about the communication structures. The reason I'm bringing that up is that under the guidelines that we're under right now, there was an event that was held on December 15th that was a town hall for the PACT Act, which is the most significant veteran affecting legislation in a generation. I have a packet for each of you that covers this information, and I'd like to have.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to speak? Representatives from Steve Bradford's office? You have any communication? No. Thank you for being here, ma'am. All right, thank you. There's no other people wishing to speak, so oral communication is declared over. Thank you. We just have that three-minute rule that we've been exercising. Well, yeah. Let me double-check. Okay, everybody who had given a card was able to speak. Thank you. Madam Clerk, your consent calendar, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I have six items on the consent calendar. There are Items 2 through 7 for your consideration and approval. Item 2, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023's agenda, motion to waive full readings. 3, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants, motion to approve the warrants. Approval of City Council meetings for minutes, for the minutes for the regular meeting of November 9, 2021, the special meeting of December 14, 2021, the regular meeting for February 22, 2022, and the regular meeting for November 8, 2022, motion to approve minutes. Resolution Number 8386, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of West 141st Street and Jefferson Avenue, motion to adopt.
Just one more, just read this next one and then we'll stop and make a motion. Please, thank you.
Resolution 8387, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a three-way stop at the intersection of West 131st Street and Sims Avenue.
Well, that was.
Motion to adopt.
Jefferson Avenue?
131st Street and Sims Avenue. That's a resolution, that's number, item number 6. Do you have that?
Was that the situation, sir? Okay, for clarification, the intersection is West 141st and Jefferson Avenue.
That is item 5.
Yes, there is a 5, there is a 6.
Yep.
Two different ones.
No, you're good, ma'am. There was, there was just an error somewhere. Do I have that correct, Mr. Deputy State Clerk? Okay. Two, one for the, 6 is for Sims, and the other one is for Jefferson, correct? Okay. We're good?
For clarification, item 6 would be for Sims and 130, 131st.
Sims and 131st?
There's a duplicate, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have the same one, okay.
Yeah.
I did, I did.
Yes, no, we just want to make sure, because once we read it and legally, it could, you know, we could bite us. All right, I make a motion?
Second.
The voting reflects the council and mayor voting yes.
Can you please read Item 7?
Yes. Resolution 8388, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, selecting a mayor pro temp and designating council member representatives to various organizations, motion to adopt.
Okay, this is, this will involve discussion from our group here. So before we talk about the actual appointments to the, to the committees, I'm going to nominate Councilwoman Angie Race English for mayor pro temp.
Second.
Please vote. For the one-year term. Please vote. We just nominated and voted for Councilwoman Race English for mayor pro temp. Thank you.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Congratulations. Thank you, members and colleagues.
So you're like my backup, you're my right-hand person throughout any things that we need, okay? Thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and go through the, through the list here?
And Mr. Mayor, through the chair.
Sir.
Centinela Youth Services requesting that they be deleted from this appointment.
We understand, sir. Thank you. We got the message loud and clear.
Okay.
We're good.
That's in case.
All right, so Centinela Youth Services is removed. I will continue as the delegate for the Independent Cities Association. Okay? If, do we have the, so we have the delegate and alternate position following? I wish we would have had the sheet with all the assignments, sir. Do we have them? The other one with the actuals?
There's another sheet, sheet that the city clerk's office should have, but we could, we could pass that down later.
Are we prepared to move ahead without that? Or would anybody just like to see where they are and if they would like to continue?
Yeah, so to.
You'll get it? Okay, so go ahead. Any comments, ma'am?
I was just gonna say to the mayor not to interrupt, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
The, the sheet, sheet that we're talking about, because we have a new colleague here, it shows the day and time of the committee meeting and where.
And who's on it right now?
And who's on it currently, and who's the, the delegate and who's the alternate. So that's just very specific as to date, time, and where, and I'm sure that would be shared.
It's coming.
Shortly.
How about this?
So you asked for independent city associations as the.
Yeah, let's, okay, let's move on to City Manager's Consent Calendar, and we'll go back to that as soon as the City Manager, the staff comes back with that copy. Is everybody okay with that? Just so we can have, and everybody can take a look, all right? City Manager's Consent Calendar, please, can you please read that? We're just jumping over. Ma'am?
Item 12, construction of speed humps on Sundell Avenue between Imperial Highway and 118th Street. Item 13, award of a contract for highway safety improvement project, traffic signal upgrade and reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue. That's project number 21-06. Item 14, housing maintenance 2023 rehabilitation of city-owned properties, various location, city project number 22-06, out to bid. Item 15, approval of purchase of up to eight police patrol vehicles. Item 16, nonprofit organization grant. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City, City Manager's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve Items 12 through 16?
Chief, can you please come up and address Item 15? Just so the residents know exactly why we do this and why we have to upgrade or move ahead with the police cars.
So our primary issue was that in the 2122 fiscal year, which just ended, we had originally established a plan to replace seven of our patrol vehicles due to mileage concerns and maintenance concerns. And as a result of a supply chain issue, only three of those vehicles have been delivered to the City of Hawthorne at that, at this time. So we're looking to change how we've done the purchasing of police vehicles, and instead of specifying a specific vendor for more of an open-type purchase order, that would allow us to take advantage of opportunities from other dealerships regionally in the area that might have the police vehicles that we are looking for. So the purchase of the eight vehicles would ultimately result in the cancellation of the three or four that have not yet been delivered from the prior fiscal year.
Thank you, sir. I make a motion?
Second.
The voting reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. So let's see what, we have staff in the back. I just don't want to like do something without
To me, what about the public hearing?
Public hearing? We're good with that, I don't think. We can move ahead. Just don't want to, miss anything without our.
Because Greg is here for that. Yeah, Greg McLean, yeah.
Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, please proceed with Item 8. Please, ma'am?
Now is the time in place for public hearing and introduction of ordinance 2237, amending Chapter 17.04, 17.14, 17.25, 17.26, 17.28, 17.29, 17.32, and 17.34, and deleting and replacing Chapter 17.90 of Title 17 zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code relating to the zoning of cannabis businesses. No written communications were received.
Okay, so is there anybody wishing to address this item? Okay, I don't see anyone, so oral communication. Okay, I don't see anyone, so our communication for the public hearing is closed, ordered. Can you please read, uh, ordinance number twenty-two thirty-seven, the next part, and then we'll ask the, our staff to give us what's going on here.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending chapter seventeen oh-four, seventeen fourteen, seventeen twenty-five, seventeen twenty-six, seventeen twenty-eight, seventeen twenty-nine, seventeen thirty-two, and seventeen thirty-four. And deleting and replacing chapter seventeen point nine-zero of Title seventeen of the Hawthorne Municipal Code related to zoning of cannabis businesses for introduction.
Okay, sir, can you just tell us, uh, just the, uh, Cliff Notes version of what's going on here?
Sure, this is actually a very straightforward, um, ordinance. Now that cannabis businesses have been approved for the city, this, uh, signs the appropriate zones for each type of business. And it's, um, very straightforward in the sense that its, uh, retail will be permitted in the commercial zones subject to a conditional use permit. And all of the other cannabis uses are going to be limited to the industrial zones unless it is a delivery and is an accessory to the retail or a consumption lounge as approved by the prior ordinance in ex, in conjunction with retail. All of the rest of them will be in the industrial zones. This ordinance strikes out all of the previous language that prohibited marijuana uses and replaces, uh, that with, uh, you know, the language that says that these are permitted uses. And again, with retail, uh, subject to a CUP.
So we're basically cleaning up, um, what we've had already agreed upon. There's nothing that we're doing in, in between what we decided upon policy-wise and.
That's correct. We're essentially just assigning the locations now.
Okay, so we just wanted to, uh, we just wanted to, uh, clarify so the residents know because, uh, full, just so full knowledge for the community as to what's going on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and introduce.
So that was all that was needed. Simple introduction. It can still be debated at, or at next meetings. Going back to item seven, now that we have these documents, uh, in hand. Can you please read item seven again, uh, ma'am?
Item seven, resolution eight-three-eight-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, selecting a mayor pro temp and designating council member representatives to various organizations for adoption.
You have a strong voice.
Thank you.
You wouldn't need the mic, but.
I'm loud.
Hey. You know, you don't need, we, we can work without the mic if that's, but it's cool. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, so, sending out Sentinel Youth Services. Okay, so let's make sure I got the right page here. Sentinel Youth Services is struck. I'll go, we'll go down the, let's go down the list right here and then just fill in what we have over here. City selection committee, um, I'm going to continue as the delegate for that.
If you'll care, I could stay as alternate?
Yep. All right, let's, uh, let me put. D and then A. We're gonna use the D and A on your sheets, okay, please? So just, so where, there you are. County sanitation district number five. Mister Montero?
I will continue if you desire.
Please, if you could help me out with that, sir.
Fine.
You know the circumstances, right? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Consider, uh, councilmember colleagues, uh, we all, uh, have, uh, different types of, uh, employment situations and realize that some of these are in the day. So if, uh, we can't attend these and somebody else could attend these, uh, just make sure, just, we still value your participation however you can, but, um, we need to be realistic as to who can attend and who cannot, right?
All right.
Everybody okay with that? Just so that, just putting it out there, okay? All right, let's see. So that's done. So the county sanitation district. The Independent Cities Association, I'm going to continue as the delegate. Who would like to be the alternate for this?
I could stay.
Okay, anybody else?
I can do it also.
Would you like to just continue?
I'll give it to, I'll give it to, um, Councilmember Patterson.
You would like to take it, or what do you think?
What time are the meetings?
It's, it's, I determined by, um.
These are during day or the evening?
No, no, if you, if you look at the notice, it says basically that's the second Thursday of each month and it's notified by email as to the next meeting and where.
These are the meetings? Okay, so let me, there's, these are the meetings that are.
Conferences.
And conferences. The conferences are really the main ones, but the, and the alternate is the one who goes to the conferences. Okay, so we just need one pre-person there. So if I can't go, then, you know, we'd like for you to attend in my place at the conferences. Okay, there's two. One to the summer and one in the winter, okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be alternate.
Okay, so just understand.
If not, I'll follow after Patterson.
Can we have dual alternates?
If you can make it.
Can we have Mister? That's not a proper question to ask. What are you trying to say?
I don't know whether they allow to alternate or not.
No, we're not.
No, 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 oh, no.
No, yeah, we're not asking for not.
No, how about, um, can we do, uh?
I'm sure we can.
Well.
Angie Reyes for our doc.
But in, 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 in the past, what happened is, for example, if the alternate or the delegate cannot attend, they always ask the next line.
How about this? How about this, guys? Um, who would like to be the first, would you like to be the first alternate?
David is the first and Angie will be the second.
That's fine.
So we're gonna put A-one for LDP, A-one. And then we're gonna put A-two for ARE, okay? Is that cool? Good? All right, thank you. We're good? I'm gonna go back to a couple of these. I think it's important that we go back to a couple of these. The IC RMA. This is a critical meeting.
That's in Huntington Park, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have, uh, formerly, uh, Olivia Valentine and L. David Patterson was, uh, alternate. Anybody wanting to step up to this one?
I'll be delegate.
Okay, so. All right, let's see. We're gonna put a D for ARE. And we're gonna, who would like to be the alternate? Anything? Councilwoman Manning?
Okay, I'll, I'll be the alternate.
Alternate for AM. Okay, very good. This is a critical one. The League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division, right now we have Reyes English as the delegate and Patterson as the alternate council member.
Yeah, I'd like to stay involved in that in whatever way makes sense.
Can we keep as is? All right, let's keep as is. So let's put a D under ARE. We have a sheet here, guys, uh, people in the audience that we're working off of just to make sure that we understand who's what. We're good? The, uh, League of California Cities Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee. Who would like to be the delegate?
Do you know what time that meets? I see it's the first Thursday, but you know, is it usually during the day, evening, is it online, in person?
Which, uh, committee are we speaking of?
Uh, Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee for League of California Cities.
Some of you have already sent me like, hey, you know, please just nominate, et cetera, but I'm just leaving up to you guys to debate. What your interest is.
Uh, Mister Mayor, can we ask, uh, Ms. Valentine, what time is the meeting usually?
Right.
That's cool. So that's why they said to be determined.
Okay.
How do we get selected? I mean, I, I would like to serve, but I don't know how do we get selected.
Your, your name's on here.
Yeah, I was previously the alternate.
Why don't you, why don't you just stay and, because they'll notify you of what to do.
Okay.
So, um, who is going to be the, well, we need to still choose a delegate, right? We're not saying that the.
Yeah, you need to choose a delegate.
Okay, would you like to be the delegate? Yes, okay.
I want the alternate.
Okay, so we're gonna put with the taxation. What did I do wrong? Okay, A and D? So the revenue taxation, so it's gonna be a D for Mister Patterson, council member. And then alternate is going to be AM. Okay.
I was gonna ask if Ms. Katrina Manning wants to be the alternate for that since she's.
I was going to.
Administration assistant.
Yeah, no, 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 I don't want it. Okay.
Give it to Ms. Katrina Manning, please.
Would you like to be the alternate or the, or the delegate? Alternate, okay, good.
Wait, which one was that one?
Taxation and Revenue Policy Committee.
Yeah, the alternate.
League of Cities.
Okay. Very good. Good. So the Clean Power Alliance, I mean, I know both of you guys have been active in that, uh, Mister.
I wanna stay on because I'm on, also on the, on the executive committee. Cause I'm a delegate, but, you know, for the regular meeting, but also, uh, on, on the executive committee, so that means it's two meetings. And they meet like, uh, Thursdays, uh, the executive committee meet at one-thirty and then the regular meeting on the first Thursday of the month at, uh, two o'clock.
All right, so delegate, alternate, continue the same spots, okay, please? All right. Thank you.
So the metro one, is that?
Well, let's double check, is it on here? Where is that exactly? Here, though. Do we have it on the, we don't have it on the list.
Yeah, so.
We don't have, uh, metro on the list, this one.
Right, to the chair.
Yeah.
So cross this out because the South Bay Cog does their own selection. It's not us appointing someone.
Okay.
Okay, so you have to apply with them and then you get interviewed with their board. That's how that works. I've served already and I've applied with them in the past. So if you'd like to serve, you could always get ahold of, uh, Jackie Backrack at the South, uh, the South Bay Cog and see when the next, uh, available opening is there.
Okay.
And apply.
Okay, South Bay Cog, Councilmember Montero, can you do this one? Can you be the delegate for this?
Sure.
Who would like to be the alternate, please? And at any time, if for some reason you, you need to permanently pass it on to somebody, just let us know.
Are you to the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about the last one?
Yes. Would you like to be the alternate for that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can I ask, um, what time do that one meet?
It's a, what time do those meet? Councilwoman? Amardis?
It's six o'clock.
PM. Okay.
What, what time do they generally, uh, meet? In the day or in the evening? That would, uh, be.
Yeah, cause they have transportation committee, uh, they have the homeless task force committee, um, and they have some, you know, some other.
Yeah, I'm aware, I oversee the emails.
Yeah, they have senior commissioner, so they have different, you know, stuff.
Can, can you try to just, uh, give it a shot? And then if it becomes a difficulty and you'd like to pass on the alternate or the delegate to somebody else?
Sure.
Just let us know, okay? Just give it a shot. You'll be able to coordinate. The South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority, Board of Directors. Councilmember Montero, what's your experience? Was this?
Say it again?
The South Bay, uh, Regional Communications Authority Board of Directors, can you tell us how your experience was and if you'd like to continue?
Well, actually, you, you know, it, it's pretty good, but it, uh, it meet, um, I think we only have about six meetings a month, uh, a year. So every couple of months and it meets at one o'clock. It's usually is on a, like, uh, Wednesday?
Yeah, I think you'll be able to make it.
But no, you know.
Are you good with that?
I'm, we, I'm good with it.
Okay, if you could help us out with that one, please. He, who would like to be the alternate to that? Meets in the day, guys. Like we said, we all got our different employment situations.
You, you, you've always attended. I've nev, I've never had to.
Yeah.
And that's just the experience in the last.
We'll keep you on there?
Yeah, that's fine, cause he's always available, but should he not be available, that's.
Only if I'm out of town.
Right. Yeah.
The SCAG meeting is in the day. It's in the, in the morning at nine. So we have, uh.
Anybody can I make it?
You're a man.
It's only, it's only the first Thursday of the month, right?
Was it monthly?
Yeah. I, I'll stay on it.
Stay in the position? Uh, let's see, SCAG.
You want an alternate?
Well, no, yeah.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
You know what, um?
Or do you want to do it vice versa?
Is up to you.
You could, you could go ahead and be delegate and then I'll be alternate. How's that?
You, you stay as a delegate and as an alternate, it's still, it's still the same way once you're there.
I'm in LA anyway.
Representation, that's why.
That parking sucks over there. It's like thirty bucks just to park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Done, done. West Basin Board of Directors.
I don't. I didn't think we had, um.
There haven't been any meetings, have there? How often? Okay, this one. So you see, guys.
And what time they meet, Ms. Valentine?
It says at noon.
It says noon.
One o'clock?
Yeah.
You passed up JPA.
At work, I have my team meetings.
I. It's on, once a month, second Monday, okay, second Monday, okay, I can do it.
Okay.
I'll be the, uh, delegate. I'll be delegate.
All right, so that was, that's, let's make sure we put a D next to you.
And who's gonna be the alternate?
Would you like to put your name down?
Yes, Mason.
Councilwoman Manning?
No, not for that because on Mondays are my team meetings at that time.
Okay, so that's an absolute.
Yeah, my, I have a standing meeting every Monday at noon.
We'll put you?
I'll just leave it, but I know you're gonna make all those meetings anyway, so that's fine.
But what about, I'm sorry, to the chair?
Yes.
The Southern California Cities?
The, sorry? The JPA?
JPA, yeah.
Let me go back to where it is at.
And the time I've been on, I've never got called.
Oh.
Might be good for you.
We did SCAG already, we did this, JPA. Just stay, stay as is? Stay as is?
You tried, tried, tried to give it.
Yes, yes.
Can I?
I'll give her mine.
You want to be the?
Yes, please.
She's delegate, is that okay?
So we'll do you, D, and then him and A?
Yep.
Councilmember Patterson?
We're delegate Patterson.
Oh, who's the?
Thank you.
And then A, LDP.
I didn't catch that.
Yep.
Who's the delegate for the JPA?
Katrina.
Councilwoman Manning? And the, and the alternate is.
David.
Yeah, Councilmember Patterson. All right, so we need to go back up to Independent Cities, uh, Association.
Which one?
Councilwoman Manning, can you be the, uh, my alternate, please, on this one?
Sure, please, sure.
Which one is it?
The Independent Cities Association?
Okay.
All right. Did we do that already? No.
I did, I don't show.
We came back to it.
ICA, are you sure?
I thought it was the delegate. I don't know, remember you got, the first delegate was David Patterson and the second was Angie.
Oh, for the city sec, selection committee.
It's right here.
The first one.
Independent Cities Association Patterson, it says Patterson.
Oh, the city selection committee, that's different.
The city selection committee.
You just said independent.
Cities, yeah. The Independent City Selection Committee is, uh, yeah. So, look, okay, guys, this is pretty critical, so, um, the city selection committee, I just want to kind of generally go over some of these so we all understand what's expected of us. As you saw, some of these are monthly meetings, some of them are quarterly meetings. The ones that stand out to me are the city selection committee. That means, uh, we as a, as a city need to send my, I guess, uh, whoever the delegate is to be able to vote on behalf of the city for different, um, committees, county-wide committees that are, uh, going to need representatives. So somebody volunteers or gets nominated, they're running for the specific seat. Okay, AQMD, the water, it's the water this, water that, so. That happens every so often as needed, okay? That happens every so often, as needed, okay? So, just to realize that that's what your duty is and they meet, and they meet during the, during the evening, so that's pretty good.
Who was that, who did you select?
So, there are. Sir, for, uh, elective, uh, training that we have, what is the budget for each of our training? Is it two or three?
It's currently three thousand dollars.
Three thousand, okay. So that should remain the same, so that if you choose to go to a training conference for yourself, you choose to go to one, it just can't exceed for the whole year? Your personal, uh, training should not exceed three thousand. We can leave as is. Some of these committees will require, as your duty as an alternate, for you to travel for the meeting as a function of your role here. So, I want, but we should accommodate for the delegate? Or that one person is going to be our representative, not for the both, but just for that person that's going to be going to that. So the Independent Cities Association has two meetings. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, SCAG has, I think, a conference? No, well, SCAG has at least one conference. Right, that's, SCAG has at least one conference. Um, what else? What other one do we have? Uh, the League of California Cities?
And Independent Cities.
As a LA, yeah, has, I think, one state conference, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have at least four conferences that we should, we need to have a specific budget, but that not, should not tap into your personal choice. So say you're gonna be representing us up in Sacramento as part of one of these committees. Why should you tap into your personal training or elective, uh, conference budget, right? So, uh, I feel that we should, uh, ask our city manager to allot a specific amount of money to be able to account for that travel to each, any of these conferences that you as a delegate will be attending. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, can you designate which, um, committees I should allocate a budget for?
It can't just be any casual meeting either, it has to be something as your official function, okay?
I think it's for into like the annual, annual conferences for like the League of California Cities and, and these, um.
Yeah.
These committees.
So, uh.
Is Council, where, what committees they would like me to designate for a travel budget?
Well, there are two, and just remember, I'm not gonna be attending all the ICA, so whoever my, uh, delegate.
ICA, League of California Cities.
You would be my alternate, you would go, if you can, as if I don't get to go. So, they're local, they're not even, you don't have to jump in a plane or anything like that. They're local, so it's, but hotel, um, and registration.
And Mr. Mayor, for clarity, can we, uh, review selections for Robert and I?
Let's do that first?
Yes, please.
Okay, so. Alright, so we're just maybe a lot like a thousand or whatever the heck it is, okay? Independent Cities Association, I'm the delegate. Manning is the, uh, so I'll just go by last names, guys, okay, just to make it quicker. Vargas is the delegate, Manning is the alternate. ICRMA? English is the delegate, Montero is the alternate. League of California Cities, City Selection Committee, uh, I'm the delegate. And alternate one is Patterson. Alternate two is English. Uh, League of California Cities? Los Angeles County Division, English is the delegate, Patterson is the alternate. Okay? The Revenue and Taxation Committee, Patterson is the delegate and Manning is the alternate. Okay? The Clean Power Alliance, Montero is the delegate, English is the alternate. Los Angeles County Sanitation District, I'm the delegate and, uh, Montero is the alternate. South Bay Cog? Montero is the delegate, Manning is the alternate. The South Bay RCC? Montero is the delegate, Man, uh, English is the alternate. SCAG? English is the delegate. Montero is the alternate. JPA? Um, Manning is the delegate and, uh, Patterson is the alternate. West Basin? Montero is the delegate and English is the alternate. Okay? Ma'am?
What are those doing?
What's happening?
Those two, back to control, who else?
We don't have them here anymore, we removed them. For some reason or another. For some reason or another.
Now, we don't have all this stuff.
Let's just get to the chair. Can we just get clarification tomorrow?
Please do take that note. Get clarification.
And if there should.
What happened to those?
Yeah. If there should be an appointment, just put it on the agenda for the next council.
That was KHHR and what else? Was Vector. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, going back to the issue of the, uh, the travel, uh, funding for representation as a delegate or alternate for these, there's two meetings for ICA, okay? Uh, there's one statewide meeting for the South Bay Cog, if you're able to go. And then there's one for the League of California Cities and SAC.
Yeah, I remember that one.
So those are four meetings that we have clearly identified require overnight stay possibly, or, you know, whatever the heck, you know, like a plane, quick plane trip for a day trip. Whatever, so.
Well, you guys vote, there's a voting the next day, so.
I wanted to include this as well. Mr. City Manager, what would be, uh, an appropriate, based on the, uh, the travels that you have had from for these that you've had to, we've had to, what would be appropriate amount to budget for each of these meetings, just to have like a good headroom?
Uh, I would guesstimate or estimate, I should say, anywhere from a thousand to thirteen hundred per incident.
Could we make it, uh, between thirteen hundred per each? So we could budget four times, what is that, four thousand fifty-two hundred? Fifty-five hundred or something for these, uh, meetings, please?
Yes, I'll look at our budget.
Part of this, please?
Yes.
Alright. I'll make a motion to confirm these and, and the travel allowance for these meetings?
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Alright, thank you, city council members, um, and, uh, we'll see how it all plays out. I work downtown, so, and I, I, I'm a teacher, so I don't have substitute teachers that will allow for me to do this on such consistent basis, so, thank you to both of you that are, you know, stepping up and in such a great manner, so thank you so much, okay? And to you guys too, who are ready to take it a level, right? Alright, so let's see. General Matters? Uh, Ms. City Clerk?
Item nine, formation of a business collaborative division. Staff recommends that the city council discuss formation of an internal business collaborative division.
Can you read ten to go with that? Oh, no, no, uh, no.
There's a report now? Or nine?
Mr. City Manager, we don't have anything to vote here? I don't think the, uh, there's not.
Uh, there's a staff report and.
Hey, let's take a look, guys.
Yeah, I said item nine.
Because this required, staff recommends the city council discuss formation of an internal. Okay, this is, I think this is following up on, uh, your request, I think it's a great idea, willing to pursue that and, uh, to take further measures to investigate that. We have support from the business community, I've received calls and they're excited about this. Unfortunately, I wouldn't wanna say it this way, but they're looking for an alternative to what we do have in the cit- in the city. And, uh, wish it was different, but, um, I think that was, this was a good idea that, uh, I've talked about in the past, but you recently brought it up to light again, so I appreciate that you did that.
To the chair real quick.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, so since there's a, um, we have an agenda bill, we're seeing basically what the, um, recommendations are and what the ultimate, um, objective is, um, I don't think there's any necessarily more direction that's needed. I think, I, I think we have what we need, um, from what the duties will be in a sense for a, an ad hoc committee, right? And, um, having, um, a council member, um, sit on that committee, but for the most part, the goal is that, um, the city has its own department to manage, uh, its own, uh, Chamber of Commerce in supportive businesses. So that's the ultimate goal.
This is, yeah, so this is ours Chamber of Commerce, and I think we're just calling it that because let's just, no other way of painting it up, so. Good, so that's, uh, just proceed. This is not, this doesn't require a vote, this is from you guys.
So we'll bring it back as a resolution with, uh, full bylaws and what we need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten, ma'am, please.
Now is the time and place to declare received sealed requests for proposals for the city of Hawthorne Bridge Housing Site Operator. Proposals were received from Locata and from Rambo House. Staff recommends that the city council accept the proposals for recommendation and study.
We'll accept the proposals and then we can debate like, uh, we're accepting proposals for the recommendation, what, what is, how, what's your approach, mister? I have questions on this, to be honest with you, but when would be the appropriate time to discuss?
Would you like to ask your question first?
When do we get to decide which one we choose?
Uh, city staff will study the bids, we'll bring back for approval. So at that time, if we select one of the vendors, uh, you would approve, if you disapprove, that's when you would have discussion regarding why we selected that, that entity.
So, it's asking for, it's asking for.
Yeah, go ahead, just go ahead and just do what you do. I make a motion?
Second.
The voting reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
And the only reason, with all respect to everybody who's, uh, you know, has made decisions on bids before, sometimes I don't, whether it's cheaper or more expensive, I think I push that away. You know, I wanna make sure that it's the best appropriate group taking care of this, that's all.
It's not based only on the money, it's based off what quality of service they're gonna provide, too.
We do follow that approach also with our public works projects, right? Okay, so it's not.
Absolutely, it's not always the cheapest, it's their track record, their resume.
And that goes a long way, too, so just take the proper, yeah, take it.
Will do, thank you.
Eleven, please?
Now is the time and place to declare received sealed requests for proposals for the city of Hawthorne Bridge Housing Site Security. Proposals were received from Cornerstone Protective Services, City Guard, Paragon Protective Services, Altech Industries, Inc., and City Security and Patrol, Inc. Staff recommends that city council accept proposals for recommendation and study.
Man, those numbers are all over the place.
I'll make a motion.
Proposal numbers?
Second.
Please vote.
The proposal, yeah.
Anything from to be determined to two hundred seventy-seven thousand to two point nine million?
So just to be, uh, to clarify, there's gonna be an RFP for security services, correct?
Yeah, there was.
Oh, there was?
This is a proposal.
It was, and then they just submit, we got one, two, three, four, five proposals.
And the proposal numbers are all over the place, too.
Yeah, it's all over the place.
And I don't have that, so just an FYI.
Yeah, and eleven.
Okay, that's why I was like, what's, okay.
Number eleven.
Got it, okay.
We have some, yeah, okay, TBD, two million.
Two hundred and some thousand, it's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, a good point, do you think our, um?
How do you, do?
Was our, uh, was our, uh, request, RFP? Was it kind of?
You have requests for proposals.
Was it decently written or these guys are just all over the place?
Right.
I mean, you guys were pretty.
We have the best staff in this, in the world, so I'm gonna say their proposals are all over the place.
I don't know, I was just saying.
But, but on a serious note, that we're gonna conduct interviews next week with each candidate to go over their RFP.
What?
We're gonna interview each candidate to go over their RFP, so at that time, they can make modifications or we can go back out the bid if it's miscommunication.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Please, I don't necessarily believe that Paragon Protective Services with the TBD, to be determined, should even be qualified here on this list. So I think we need to strike that, this is an RFP proposal, submit your proposal, don't submit it to be determined, that's crazy.
Well.
So. I.
I don't know what the.
That, that's not what you.
Alright, let's just proceed, you know, I, I kinda say like, maybe this is usual standard operating procedure?
No, it's not standard, yeah.
That some of them are able to and present this later?
You got two with to be determined, that's crazy, I'm sorry. It's a proposal.
I'm sure staff will be able to handle it appropriately.
Submit a number, submit a number.
Just happy to handle it appropriately.
And when they interview them, that you didn't like what they did.
I'm saying it right here, I don't like what you did. Okay, thank you.
Something like, I kinda like, I saw that too, so.
Because, yeah, i- i- in effect, Ms. Single is correct.
It's wasting people's time.
When you submit a proposal, you have to submit all, everything on it, including your budget and everything like that.
It's a waste of time.
Take that.
Resources and people reviewing your application with the TBT, to be determined.
You're right, you're right. Bring them in and just take this into like, keep this in the back of your head, but, uh, just see why these guys, you know, maybe they might not even come in for.
And for fairness, there's two of them, Altech Industries, I named that one as well, so. Okay, thank you.
Have I gone through all the voting items up to this point? Or did I skip something?
No, I, I believe you have.
Yeah, alright. Item seventeen, city commission update? Can we jump? Uh, just a moment. Also, Councilmember Patterson, go ahead.
For the city commission update?
Well, who's giving the, uh, city commission update, what's, what's the?
I would imagine just the city attorney. I, I, I know I had asked some questions and we were given, um, legal confidential, but no, no name was put next to it, but of course I can, I can lead this discussion out.
I left mine in my office, so.
Through the chair, there's an agenda item for item seventeen.
Okay.
It, it is a new book.
Go ahead. Discussion? So I think we want to talk about, um, I think understanding what the different commissions are and the vacancies and who was on them and when they meet and all that good stuff. Um, I know we also had the city attorney give his legal confidential as far as appointments and dismissals and all like, all that good stuff. I believe, uh, Ms. Earlman, Earlman brought up a good point about that as far as we do have, apparently we have eight-year term limits and we have a few individuals that have, uh, reached that term, so have to make a determination how we wanna handle that, uh, if anything. But I did, I, I know, one of the things I want to discuss with all of this is have the council really understand what each commission is all about and be able to kinda communicate what our vision is for each commission.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, reflecting back on twenty twenty-one, when it was a directive to our prior or previous city manager and city attorney, obviously letters did not go out. It's quite obvious, they didn't go out. It's quite obvious that we weren't aware that they didn't go out. Uh, having said that, the rule of thumb in which there was a vote in twenty twenty-one was basically to provide term limits to commissioners. The same way city council members now have term limits as well. Um, it's in my opinion that those that have served and have expired their time, that we send letters of thank you and that we ask and open up for those that are wanting to serve, have a will to serve, to be, have, to be given an opportunity to serve, uh, for those commissions to be opened, but that we as a council body uh, get to have, uh, to have an opportunity to vet out those applications and to review those applications for recommendation. I understand that the mayor has the authority, the appointing authority. However, as a council body, I hope that we could work collectively to make the selection of those commission positions and those individuals. So, that's, that's my, um, two cents.
I mean, I, I would like for it to be kinda automatic if somebody turns out that, that they're, um, removed from the commission and they can reapply along with where else wants to apply and go through the. removed from the commission and they can reapply along with whoever else wants to apply and go through the appointment process all, all over again. Obviously, you know, it's a discretion of the mayor to a point. Um, but I would, I don't want it, wouldn't want it to be biased in any type of way. So if that, if the rule is there is a, a term limit, then I think we should, you know, as a city, follow that, um, follow that process.
To the chair. I remember the discussion on this item and I agree with, uh, my colleague where I think we should collectively, uh, decide on the commission. Um, we are all here as council people and, and we should work together in, in deciding the commission. And I also think that if you have a term limit, just like city council people, we know that after four years, our term is up. And so it, it should be automatically, it shouldn't be something that, um, we have to enforce. And then also I think because there is some vacancies that I see, I think if some of the people that are gonna be, uh, leaving, if they're willing to stay on until we can fill those spots, that way we have a quorum um, and that they can continue to do the work, um, that their, uh, commission is, is requiring so that things are just not sitting still. The goal is to continue to move the city forward and not sit still. So I would definitely, uh, like to see people stay on, um, if, if they're available until we fill those spots. Thank you.
To the chair. I do agree with Ms. Katrina Manning.
And I, I would like to add to that, just only in the case where there wouldn't be a quorum if somebody was dismissed. If there's not a quorum, then of course, I, I think it's a good idea somebody be asked to, to say to make sure there's a quorum. But if there's still, will be a quorum after whoever will be dismissed, then they should be dismissed. And, um, we need to make sure that we're working with the, uh, clerk's office in advertising to, to the public that these positions are available for appointment.
To the chair. As I understand, if they are separated from this position, they have to wait a year to reapply?
It is, under, um, here's my, uh, recommendation is that I, I read through resolution number eighty-two sixty-eight that was passed in April thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. And there are deadlines and steps and there are letters to be issued by the city clerk's department, uh, report to be submitted to city council for December first of each year. I, I, I think these are for term limits, it, it's gotten rather complex. And, you know, with all the events that occurred, if you remember that meeting, um, I think it kind of was an oversight that, you know, I don't think the city clerk's office really followed with the, with the requirements under eighty-two sixty-eight. So based on what I'm hearing from directives, from, uh, discussions from both Councilwoman Manning and, and Mayor Pro Tem Patterson and Councilman Montero, I think there's a need for a revision of, uh, the resolution number eighty-two sixty-eight. Maybe based on what I've been hearing tonight, that we should come back with another resolution to amend how we should, uh, apply the term limits of eight years. We could keep that eight years as a term limit, but I think there, um, the steps need to be a little bit simplified. We do need to give a notice to the, um, the commissioners that are affected by it. But, um, maybe we should start off kind of clean, accepting the eight-year term limit, but the procedures to be a little bit different so that we don't have a vacancy where they're not, um, where they're not taking any action during the period when we're filling that position.
Yeah, that makes sense. If you can come bring that back to the council, that'd be, that'd be great.
Also, to the chair. Also, can you add the, um, business, the new business formation, right? Add that as a new, um, commission for, um.
Are we doing a commission or are we doing ad hoc?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I was, yeah, of the ad hoc, yes.
So that's just not.
Not the actual, yes, ad hoc. Thank you.
And, uh, we, obviously while we're still on the subject, could somebody explain to me and everybody what the civil, what each commission does? What does the civil service commission do? What do they, what stuff is brought before them, uh, when they do meet? Same thing with the planning commission. Uh, what do they do? What kind of stuff is brought before them when they do meet?
So planning commission is very vital to all the real estate development and every city has a planning commission. Um, when there is a request for application for conditional use permit, there, it goes through the planning commission. The, some of these permits are appealed to city council, but a lot of these development matters are resolved at planning commission level. So, um, you won't see a lot of the things that, because we'll be, the council will be overinundated if you didn't have a planning commission. Uh, civil service commission deals with job placement. Um, it could also involve an appeal by a, uh, civil servant, appealing a disciplinary action that goes through the civil service commission. So, um, one of the, uh, so for instance, if you had an employee that was disciplined by, um, their management and whatnot, and they want to appeal that disciplinary action, it goes through the civil service commission. All the new hiring, new positions that are posted, it goes through approval process with civil service commission. So, um, I don't know the details of other commissions, but I know that planning commission and C, and civil service commissions have agendas on a regular basis that they must, uh, take actions on. Yeah, they both, they both meet twice a month.
God, so it's a very active commission.
Yes.
Um, for sure, the, the planning commission, I, I, I would, um, love for the council, I guess, however, everybody wants to do it, to share kind of what our interest is in terms of real estate development in, in the City of Hawthorne, given the fact that the planning commission represents us on that subject. So personally, I mean, while I'm talking, I, I definitely, um, am pro-development in our city. Uh, I would like to see, um, quality, uh, residential projects brought to our city. Uh, I would like to see, uh, more things that support, um, uh, all income levels throughout the course, you know, throughout our city. So we have everybody from unhoused to those that are pretty affluent and definitely want to encourage more homeownership, uh, within our city. I definitely would love, um, one of the things, one of the positive things about new, uh, development, whether it be commercial development brings new businesses, residential development brings, uh, new income into our city. And that's definitely, uh, something that I think is valuable that we encourage in the City of Hawthorne. As we bring up our average, um, household income in the City of Hawthorne, it makes it easier for us to attract, uh, newer businesses, uh, restaurants, um, grocery stores, uh, and visiting, uh, a number of conferences with, with my colleagues, uh, and talking to developers and talking to restaurants, talking to, to, um, hotel chains and different businesses. One of the first things they ask us about our demographics, specifically what our average household income is. And currently, I, I forgot the number off the top of my head, I think our average household income is around fifty-six thousand dollars a year. And many of these companies, you know, look for a minimum of about seventy-five thousand dollars a year for them to, um, consider a particular area. And correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, because I know you guys have had these conversations with, with, with these professionals and these companies. And so one of the benefits of, uh, bringing, um, uh, homeownership opportunities to our city, it definitely will bring, um, owners that, that have, um, household income in the six figures, because it's required nowadays, average household, our average home price in Hawthorne is eight hundred thousand dollars. So I would imagine that requires a couple bucks to go ahead and to, uh, to, to purchase. And, um, as we all know, um, rental prices are going up, um, in the area. And so, uh, new kind of state-of-the-art, um, even rental developments, uh, would definitely attract, uh, some higher incomes. And I'm not saying any of this to, um, want to push out those that don't have higher incomes. I also want to make sure that we are having projects that accommodate those of all income levels. Um, just like we're having our, our pallet shelters for the unhoused, you know, want to make sure we have, um, quality, um, living options for, uh, those that are in all economic, um, economic brackets. But, but personally, I would love to know that our planning commission had a spirit of how can we, um, bring quality development to our city as fast as possible. Obviously, if there's a developer that's not bringing quality, then, you know, we have no desire to accommodate them. But if they're, they're coming with the spirit of wanting to bring value to the city, we should definitely have the spirit of trying to work with them so that that happens as expeditiously as possible.
To the chair.
Um, just as a suggestion, I think it would be beneficial if you, uh, maybe attended some of the planning commission's meetings or the civil service or, um, all of the commissions that we have and maybe talk to them, because they can really give you detailed information on the projects that they have worked on and the work that they're doing. Um, and they could probably tell you a lot better than, I believe, the city manager. Um, because they're doing the work every single day and it's an opportunity to take advantage of, uh, finding out the work that they do. So it's just a suggestion.
Oh, through, through my, through the chair. Planning director could also answer that question.
Right.
Just, uh, look, guys. We, okay, so, uh, planning commission meetings have been online, right? For the longest, so I don't think there's even any need to even come into the city, uh, city council chambers to see them in action. You could already be, have been or be, uh, looking at their meetings. So the, we know and have the information available as to what they do. And, uh, the, uh, at least for one of, one of us, or two of us in the formation of the senior commission and the veterans commission and in the course of the activities, we've been getting reports and discussions, so I think we should all be familiar with their functions at, after this point. And we've gotten sufficient amount of reports from the Parks and Rec, uh, group, senior citizens commission group, planning commission group. We, we all know how critical those are. So, um, I think there's ample opportunity to get that information. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad that everybody wants to be familiar with that. But at least for the planning commission, with their, uh, meetings are online that you can, um, see what they do.
To the chair.
I think you were poised, I'm gonna give it to Montero and then to, uh, Councilmember Montero and then, uh, Mayor Pro Tem after that.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, um, one other thing that, uh, we should be aware of is that, for example, the planning commission, they act on behalf of recommendation from the staff, from the planning department. The planning department will present them a project. And based on that project, there will be a recommendation from the staff to accept or not accept and then for them to give them guidance on, on our zoning laws, on how, how many parking situation we need, how many, uh, that zone does not allow this, does not allow that. But they are basically accepting or not accepting the recommendation from our planning department. So if you want to know more about the, the commissioners, it's not per se what each, what each, which each individual do, but it's what the planning department is submitting to them for them to discuss, review, accept or not accept, right? And, and, and was, as you know, any decision from the planning commission, uh, if it's a yes, if it's according to the staff recommendation, it goes forward. But if somebody, if they say no to a project, that, it, the developer, somebody can appeal to us. That is what sometimes is, they don't recommend for us to attend some of those meetings because of the conflict of interest, because then they're wrong, you're gonna vote for, for some project that, uh, but the staff comes to us and say, this is the reason that the planning commission denied this project. They explain to us and then we have to vote yes, A or N. So the planning commission, each individual basically followed our staff guidelines, right? So it's not they making decision on their own. So they might oppose a project, yes, because it didn't fall into our zoning laws. That's their obligation to do that. And also they have the same obligation to accept what is accepted for our zoning laws and land use, okay? The same thing as the service service commission. Service service commission is very important, especially for the Hawthorne Police Department and HR. So that is where as council member should not be attending those meetings because it's conflict of interest, because it is a lot of issues that is staff, personnel, that we should not be involved in. So that is where you have to understand how the commissions operate. So the, for my final comment on this one is I agree with our attorney, Robert Kim, to come back with that ordinance eighty-two sixty-eight. So to talk more about the eight-year term limit, stay there and then to clean up a little bit because if we do, we do not have a waiting list of people waiting to become commissioners, right? So we do, we want this commission to be functional. So it is, on my understanding, is, is the commission, if they want to serve, to continue to serve until somebody step up and say, I'm putting my name for commission. So then if the mayor accept the application, he'll nominate and then we come here and discuss his or her qualification. So the commission should, even past eight year, if we don't have a replacement, they should continue to serve until we find a replacement. That is my recommendation.
Go ahead.
To the chair.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, Councilwoman Patterson, I understand what you said uh, with regards to the objectives of the, this body and what your hopes are with regards to, um, the planning commissioners', um, task, um, to line up with what, uh, the city council's hopes are, right? Um, I know in my time on the council, I've never attended any planning commission meetings. Uh, just because it's, you know, it's an, it's an independent body and it does its own decision-making. At the end of the day, if there's any projects or developments that are opposed and voted out or down, those are appealed to the council and then ultimately we have that, um, voting authority to either oppose or support. But I understand what you're saying, because the planning commission, um, is a very important commission. Not that all of them aren't important, but that one is specifically because it speaks to the economic development of the city and how we are doing. And if our, our, our planning commissioners, um, have a, um, track record, if you will, of voting down potentials, there, there should be a concern there, right? However, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate that. Um, that's a com, one year in particular, I took in twenty twenty to visit each department in the city and spoke to each department head independently, independently, along with staff to let them know what my hopes were for that department, but more importantly, have them provide feedback to us on what their needs are. So, um, since it's January and this is a, a fresh start, um, I might be doing that again, going to each department, uh, asking to see what, what their needs are and ultimately supporting that and just having a candid conversation. And let me tell you, they're very, um, shocked that you're doing that, for one, because it's never been done. And, um, it shows that there is, um, efforts from this body, this council, um, to, to help make their department better. So, but thank you for, for that. I appreciate that. And, um, everything else.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
But one thing to keep in mind, that it's good to go meet staff and talk about the goals and objective for, uh, department, but we cannot undermine our city manager.
I knew where you were going with that.
Okay? Because the city manager is the one that manages staff. We do not manage nobody. We manage, it's the city manager, city attorney, and even the chief of police respond to city manager. And then city manager is responsible to us. So if we have any goals and objectives to give to any member of our staff, it's given through our city manager. So because we cannot undermine his authority, because then people not respect him.
I don't think, that's not, it's not.
I'm not, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, but you're being.
It's good, it's good for you to.
But you're being combative.
Okay, no, no, I'm not being combative.
This is a discussion. You're, you're assuming, don't assume.
No, I'm not assuming.
Okay, so there's authority, there's authority that we follow and we get that.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Everybody has their style, so you have a style, I have a style.
Miss English, sorry, sorry, I'm not attacking you, I'm just making a statement.
Mayor Pro Tem, please.
I'm just making a statement because I don't want, uh, I don't want the, this city staff and city council to be, uh, one of those city council, it used to be in the past, that we used to have somebody, sitting on that chair, that used to go intimidate all the staff, undermining, you know who I'm talking, right? So undermining our city manager and the city attorney.
Okay, I'm not going backwards.
So we don't want the, our staff to feel fear that, okay, if, if the city manager tell them to do something, but they don't like and then it coming wrong to us, to the city council, oh, the city manager is telling me to do this, but that's not what you told us. So we have to stay into our lines, in our boundaries. Make sure that all the five of us, our goals and objectives for the city are in balance and that we agreeable what the planning commission should be doing, what the civil service commission should be doing, what the Parks and Rec should be doing. So we should be. doing, what the parks and rec should be doing. So we should be on, you know, in, in agreement. We should not be dictating, it's a Miss Katrina's goal, it's Davis' goal, it's the Vargas' goal, it's English' goal, or Montero's goal. It shouldn't be like that. It should be what is the benefit for the people of Hawthorne and how we're going to operate each, the city council with, through the city manage, so he can have the authority to, to fulfill our expectations. That is what we need to think about. I'm not criticize nobody. That's me, 'cause I said, I'm gonna be the voice of the reason and I'm a common sense person. And I've been a manager. I have supervised three superintendents. And I have my own staff. I have deal with personalities and stuff. So evaluate staff, so I don't want undermine our city manager. That's my view.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
To the chair.
Do you want to, let me go, let me calm this down.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm not criticize no one. I'm just saying, that's me. I, I tell the truth.
Look, I think uh, there's things that we wanna stay away from, from the past, absolutely, and we've all seen it. Okay, there were some good things that came out of those previous administrations, but some things that we don't wanna make a habit, you know, for us, for ourselves, especially. So you're right. Um, I think it's good that we just show goodwill to our city department heads and our, and our workers and tell them that we have our support, okay?
Right. Now, what I was, and I'm glad you're going there, because like the new council member.
I'm not finished, I'm not finished. So I, kudos to everybody who's reaching out to the staff, to employees and letting them know that they have our support. But we have our commissions and we have our uh, our, our police and everything. Commissions in particular, we really may need to make sure that those are kept as a unbiased, untampered uh group of people who are making decisions. Whether they make decisions that I like or don't like, that's happened in the past, planning commission, the veterans commission, hello? There haven't been really any battles from you guys or anybody. Yeah, but, or senior commission or parks and rec. I would like to see them sometimes do things different, but the thing is, we need to make sure that uh, we don't go to the meetings. I'm just repeating some of the summarizing, don't go to the meetings, because we've been recommended. We can't have the commissioners and the candidates in front and share our vision, because if a developer gets wind that we had talked to them and told them what our vision was, that's already preempting future decisions that they're gonna make and biasing any potential decisions that they can make. And we could, and if they get wind of that, which they will, they're looking for any opportunity to challenge any decision that the city council. And then we would have to adhere to anything they wanna build or anything they wanna develop. So we get screwed over because of that. So um, I think uh, staff has received like their direction to come back and tidy things up. Um, but we just need to make sure that even going through this process, the planning commission has made decisions that I, I've liked very much and decision, decisions that I don't like. Like I said, I guess I'm repeating myself, but uh, I think it's, the people that are on the, on the commissions have served us well, so I commend them and uh give kudos to them. And uh, it's time out of their day, time out of their uh, of their busy schedules to come to the meetings. And uh, it's hard to recruit for these positions, hard. Diana can tell me how long these positions have remained vacant with no applications. We need to remember that. So um, so yeah, I mean, we have a vision and hopefully the people are watching, those people that are, there's people that are watching and hearing us every day. We have commissioners here in the audience. So I appreciate every single person's viewpoint on this and concerns. So um, I think we're taking that all into uh consideration. And uh, Mr. City Attorney, can you just go ahead and do that, what's been, uh, with the, what the group has requested? Just proceed with your suggestion that I think the group has already generally accepted. Is that right?
So my um, my understanding is that based on the discussion that's been going on here is that I'm gonna come back with an amended resolution to eighty-two sixty-eight, which put a specific steps after a term limit of eight years. We're gonna maintain the term limit of eight years, but until the position is filled, mainly what I'm hearing is that the commissioners, even though they may have passed that their term limit, they will remain until that position has been.
Only if dismissing them uh means there's no quorum.
Okay.
I thought with the position, the vacant position, what's the like, what's the desire of our council? That's your suggestion. What does everybody else think?
If there is a quorum, it's fine, because the commission will function.
But we, but we have a, we have a request to, again, to, to open it up for those to apply that are interested, right?
Um, I know that for civil service commission, they had many meetings where they couldn't act because they lack quorum because of illnesses. And I think uh, one of the commissioners went out of maternity leave, things of that nature. So um, that's, it, that is, I've been uh hearing that um, uh, one of the uh assistant city attorney who sits as council for the civil service commission is asking that we should have an alternate for civil service commission because there's been too much delay in getting certain job fillings, jobs filled and things of that nature. So that can be a problem. Uh, even if you have a quorum, if you have a commissioner that is missing for one reason or another, due to illnesses and whatnot, then, then the commission will just basically stay and there's no action taken. So um, I, I need a clear direction so, so far that I have based on what Councilman Patterson has said, that only if there's no quorum, that I would revise the uh, the resolution regarding the term limit. It's eight years and that they may remain over those eight-year term limits if there is lack of quorum and the, and the vacancy has not been filled. That's what I heard so far.
Okay. Do you wanna add that the alternate somewhere, or did?
Well, the alternate is, is something that requires of more than that. It's, yeah, requires ordinance amendments and um, I don't, I'm not sure. There's a, there's practical problems with alternates as well, that, because you can't have an alternate that just pops in and vote on. They have to be there, sitting there.
Well, they have to have had the experience of hearing the conversations.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think there should be alternates.
Okay, so go ahead. All right. Thank you, guys. We're good.
Also, we have to make sure that, that, you know, we're advertising that we're taking new applications once. Um, say even if uh commissioner is just, gets notice of dismissal, but they're retained out of necessity, there still needs to make sure we're advertising the, the requirement for uh, for applicants. But my, my other question is, is to what council member um Manning asked or stated. So is, if somebody's dismissed from the commission because they've reached their term limit, do they have to wait a year before they're appointed to a?
The resolution that was passed back in twenty-twenty-one, it's consecutive eight years. So if there's a break, um, then there, then it's, I guess it will start over again. So those are, again, you know, by ordinance, the council by majority vote can always remove a commissioner, any commissioner.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have the, they need to sit out. I, I, I would suggest that, you know, they'll be removed and they can reapply. And then we can, you know, reaffirm them uh to the commission if there's nobody else that's applying. And it's a vacancy because they vacated and they could reapply and either be confirmed or not confirmed by the council.
So there will be a term limit of eight years, but someone, a commissioner that has been termed out can reapply?
To the chair.
Yes.
I would add that there's a least, um, you know, revolve, revolve, excuse me, revolving door policy. You know, it's not that they, they expired, right, their eight years and then they um reapply like the next day, right? There's a period in time in which they have to wait so that there's ample opportunities for those that have not served to be able to fill out an application and have an opportunity to serve.
Yeah, and as be able to advertise, absolutely. So.
Exactly.
So then, how long of a term do you want them to be out before they reapply?
Maybe ninety days. Six months, what do you, I don't think it needs to be a year, though, but ninety days.
To the chair. I'd say ninety days.
I can go ninety days.
Okay. Think I have enough information.
Okay. Councilman Patterson, please proceed with item eighteen. City Attorney Kim will be presenting a PowerPoint for this item.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, a conversation I had with the city attorney uh soon after he was appointed is, you know, ways in which we can uh save the city money. And he had a great suggestion, uh which is um altering our um, our insurance uh deductible uh as a way to save some money on our, on our insurance. And I believe the city attorney has a whole presentation. Um, and with a suggestion and some options for us. And this, this insurance, this is our liability insurance if somebody is suing the city for something. Uh, right now, I believe we have a five hundred thousand dollar deductible. We pay anything below that, I believe. And we, and in order to, in exchange, we have a pretty healthy annual premium. And uh, city attorney has some suggestions as a way to save some money on that annual premium by adjusting that uh deductible.
Let's see. So if you remember, can everyone hear, hear me? Okay? So if you remember our last budget meeting, um, I reported to you that the liability insurance, which is under the city attorney budget, that the liability insurance premium has risen to, risen to the point where the last fiscal year, our liability premium was over three point one million dollars per year. Um, and that I said at that time during our budget meeting that this may not be sustainable and we have to look for some other solution. And that was when Councilman Patterson suggested, are you talking about possibly self-insurance? And that's partly true because our current deductible is five hundred thousand. It's deductible, I say deductible, but basically that is our self-insurance up to first five hundred thousand per claim. So um, if you look up there, our last fiscal year, our liability premium was three, a little bit over three point one million dollars. And our self-insurance retention, which is um our deductible, was five hundred thousand dollars. So for each claim.
Can you come closer to the mic?
Per claim, um, the self-insurance, we would have to cover, the city would have to cover five hundred thousand of the payout. That includes litigation costs plus pay the premium of over three point one million dollars. So the way I C R M A is a pooled insurance is a J P A. So up to first two million dollars is pooled money from the premiums from sixteen cities and Hawthorne is one of the cities. Anything above that is excess coverage, is, is covered by commercial insurance carrier. Um, I C R M A informed us when they raised the premium up to over three point one million dollars, it's due to commercial liability insurance carriers raising their premium price. But um, my conversation with the representative from I C R M A is that if the city was to increase our self-insurance, the deductible, up to two million from five hundred thousand per claim, that our premium will go down by one point three million a year. So that our net premium that we will pay will be, will be one point eight million from over three point one million dollars per year. And I, I just wanna give you the history of the premiums that we, that the city has been paying through I C R M A. Um, starting, I'm gonna go back about twenty years, at two thousand four, two thousand and five, our self-insurance retention was two hundred fifty thousand, not five hundred thousand. That changed around twenty nineteen. So the, in fiscal year two thousand four, two thousand and five, our premium was around half a million dollars per year. Then it, it stayed around that amount, it kinda got lower. And I, I, you know, the premiums are determined by the actuaries for insurance professionals. They, based on stats and numbers and whatnot, based on the number of claims we had, how much the city paid out, the size of our police department, many different factors. Um, but it's gradually went up to seven hundred twelve thousand in one year for premium in fiscal year twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. Then in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we saw this amount of premium go up to one point, about one and a half million dollars per year for the premium. And in, it may remained around that, it got lowered a little bit, but we ra, we had to raise our um S I R, the deductible or self-insurance to five hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, this amount jumped by about one million dollars per year to two point, close to two point four million a year. Then in fiscal year, this last fiscal year, the, the premium went up even further to three point one million, which is where we're at.
Over the last twenty years, went from a half million dollars a year to three point one million dollars a year.
Correct. From two thousand and four, around that period, we, now we're paying about, I guess about six times amount. So how did they come to all this? I, I just wanna show you how they break down the, the payouts. So starting from fiscal year two thousand four, two thousand and five, I'm comparing it to the premiums and the payouts. And what, in the category here, what I have is, I listed all the payouts that the city paid over a hundred thousand dollars. Now, remember that our um, the self-retention was two hundred fifty thousand in two thousand four, two thousand and five. So that year, fiscal year two thousand four, two thousand and five, we had total of one hundred eleven claims. But out of that, there were pretty small claims and we, there were no payout that was over a hundred thousand out of hundred eleven claims. So in, when that happens, the total payout was hundred eighty-eight thousand for that year. In red, the city paid all of that. I C R M A didn't, the insurance didn't have to kick in any money. And plus, the city also paid the premium. Okay, so the following year is, we had three cases that paid out over a hundred thousand. One was four hundred thirty, thirty-seven thousand. So that's pretty significant amount compared to our S I R of two hundred fifty thousand, which means the difference is hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred eight dollars. What I put in blue is what the, what I C R M A paid, contributed. The city paid the rest of the payout, which is six hundred ninety-eight thousand, plus the four hundred sixty-three, two thousand in premium. In fiscal year two thousand six, two thousand and seven, we had two large payouts. In one case was one point one million dollars payout. The other was three hundred fifty thousands. So there you'll see that total payout of one point nine million, because there were seventy-six claims. The, the insurance paid nine hundred seventy thousand of that one point nine million. The city still paid a little bit over a million dollars and still paid the premium as well. Um, in two thousand seven and eight, you'll see that there was about five payouts that was over a hundred thousand per each claim. One was fairly significant over our self-retention of two hundred fifty thousand, which is four eighty, four eighty-two. Another one that was over our self-retention, but by, only by forty thousand dollars. So on the total payout of that year, of one point three million dollars, the insurance covered two hundred seventy-two thousand and city had to pay a little bit over one million plus pay for the premium of four hundred thousand a year. Now, I wanna, similar thing in eight and nine, where you had one big payout of eight hundred thirty-six thousand. And out of total of eighty-three claims, one point seven million payout, the, the insurance paid six hundred sixty-seven thousand. City paid over a million dollars plus the premium as well. Fiscal year two thousand nine and ten, you can see the similar story. Out of eight hundred sixty-two thousand total payout, the insurance paid twenty-nine thousand for that fiscal year because of that two hundred seventy-nine thousand difference of twenty-nine thousand from our two hundred fifty thousand self-retention amount. So the city actually paid out eight hundred thirty-three thousand of the total eight sixty-two, plus paid the premium. In, and similar, in two thousand uh ten, two thousand eleven fiscal year, our premium went up to five hundred twenty-five thousand out of eight hundred seventy-one thousand. out of 871,000 total paid. 161 was covered by insurance. City paid 709,000. So total, the city would end up paying 1.2 million dollars or so. The next fiscal year, there was 110 claims, no payouts over 250,000. So all of the total payout of 365,000 was paid by the city plus pay the premium. So for that fiscal year, the insurance didn't have to pay, they paid zero basically. 2012 and 2013 fiscal year, I want you to look at the first two years. These are two years that the insurance carriers really had to pay. Because our self-retention was 250,000 and we had one big payout case of over 2 million dollars in that case. So that reached of the pool of, the first layer of pool of 2 million dollars was almost totally paid by the insurance carriers. Then we, in next fiscal year, we had one case that the, that the payout was over 13 million dollars. And that was a major case. And that even reached to the excess carrier, commercial carriers where they had to kick in because the pool insurance pays up to 2 million dollars. So that's where these insurance carriers have really kicked in. Now, in those, let's say, let's take the example of fiscal year 2013, 2014, where we had this big, let's say with some catastrophic, catastrophic event happens. And, and we had a claim that we had to pay 13 million dollars. If we had 2 million self-retention, city would have to pay the first 2 million dollars. Then the rest of it would be paid by the commercial carriers. 2014.
Quick question as you're hitting 14 and 15. What happened in 14 and 15 where our claims failed tremendously from 14 on?
That's right. You will see that if you go back, and I'm gonna, you know what, let me address that 'cause I'm gonna have the chief explain what's going on and why there's such a drastic reduction in the number of claims that we're seeing from fiscal year 2014 and 2015. I'll get to that. So starting from 2016, okay, so I want you to look at fiscal year 2015, 2016. Basically total payout of 396,000. That was, you know, it, it was within our self-retention. So the city paid most of that. 2017, 2018, total of 19 claims, total payout 157,000. City paid all of that. But there is one case that remains pending in from fiscal year 2016 and 2017. So we can't really, I can't really show you the graphics of how much the city had to pay versus the insurance carriers. Same thing with the rest of the fiscal years because these are relatively new. Civil litigation can last for a few years. So we have several pending cases and therefore I can't give you accurate figures for these last few years. But I hope by showing you going back even further that you could see how this insurance carriers work. And that because of the high, um, self-retention amount of 500,000, for the most part, city's paying for most of these claims outright plus the premiums. Now, let me get to your question, Councilman Patterson. And I, there is a, there's, something happened with the police department because it's not just all police liability that this insurance claims are paying out. It also involves public works, slip and fall, you know, sidewalks and things of that nature. But a bulk of this is police activity. And, um, and in terms of what has changed, I would, I'd ask the, the chief to come up and explain possible reasons why there was a drop in the number of claims since 2015.
Good evening again. Um, I, I do want to qualify what I'm about to say here. This is not an exact science. So in the business of policing, as we saw earlier this evening on the video, there are a lot of very, very difficult situations that our staff members are thrust into. And they oftentimes have to make snap decisions based on a limited amount of information. But to specifically address, uh, your question, Councilmember Patterson, and what, uh, our city attorney is presenting here. Following the two significant payouts, um, from the 2013 and 2014 years, the police department recognized an immediate need to start addressing, um, the nature in which we did business. And our police chief at the time recognized that continuing to do business and subject ourselves to that type of exposure was simply, um, it's not a sustainable business model. So beginning at that time, we started implementing as an organization, a significant amount of cultural change in the way that we provided policing services to the city of Hawthorne. And the best way that I can explain what that cultural change is, is to divide it up into four distinct categories. And the first distinct category around that time was we changed the expectation of our frontline supervisors. So for us at the police department, those would be our sergeants. And it became, uh, paramount from management at the police department, lieutenants, captains, and the chief of police at the time, to make sure that our sergeants understood that on any priority call for service where there is an indication that there might be a use of force, where there is an indication that the situation might escalate, our expectation was that our sergeants were now going to make that a priority and respond to those situations and take charge of those situations. So with the increased supervision, I think that our line level staff, our police officers, were empowered as a result of that to begin making decisions where they knew that their frontline supervisors were there and then were gonna back them up and not let them make any poor decisions based on levels of experience. So that was the first cultural change. We, we demanded that our frontline supervision become more engaged. The second category is training. Most required training for our professional and sworn staff at a police department is designated by the state of California. They determine what the minimum hours of training are per year. And that minimum hour of training is kind of, it's low in these, in these four categories. So the four categories are use of force training, communications training, dealing with mental illness training, and de-escalation techniques. And the state of California only requires 10 hours of training for each police officer a year. And what we began doing in 2015, 2016 is doubling that amount of training. Now, that has served a significant, that has a significant trickle-down effect on our staff. Because now our staff knows that when they go to a situation where they might meet with some sort of resistance from a member of the public, that the first option is not what the department did when I got hired close to 30 years ago, right? We're not, we're not looking to make an arrest. We now have some other tools in our toolbox that, and it's documented training. We've doubled it. So every year, your Hawthorne police officers are getting 15 to 20 hours of training. That's documented and certified. That doesn't include in-service training, which is roll call briefing trainings and debriefings of significant incidents as they happen. So the second category in our, in our cultural change is training. Moving on, um, to the third category, the third category is technology. We have some significant technological advances that have come across the law enforcement profession. The main one that I can point to that kind of, it came a few years later, I think it was around 2017, 2018. We implemented body worn cameras for our patrol staff. And the body worn cameras serve to, um, maintain the composure of our officers. But here's the, uh, unknown benefit that nobody saw coming. It also serves to maintain the composure and behavior of the public. When the public and your, when, and when the public and your police officers know that they are being recorded, people tend to act more civilly than they might otherwise. And that's really served as a huge de-escalation tool on both sides of the fence. But we are, I will be honest, we are pleasantly surprised with the effect that it has had in most of our encounters with members of the public. The other technological advance that we are, uh, pushing out right now as we speak are drones. So as you saw in the video earlier today, our officers on certain priority calls, they know that somebody is injured and they want to get to that situation as quickly as they can and render aid. That's the culture of our police department. What we used to do, absent the injury, is we used to also rush in on any report of an armed subject, any report of a disturbance of an assault in progress. But we really didn't know whether or not the information that was provided to us was accurate. And now what we have the ability to do is we have the ability to slow things down and send a drone in first. So our officers are actually staging two to three blocks away from where the disturbance call is coming out. And we're deploying drones from the trunks of our police cars. And our officers are getting real-time information of the situation that they're going to go into. So instead of coming in and finding the first person who unfortunately chose, uh, to wear clothes that matches a description giving in the call now, we're gonna be able to say, okay, there is somebody who is wearing, uh, um, a gray sweatshirt. But despite the fact that the call says he has a gun in his hands, we can see from the drone footage that he does not have the gun in his hands. And now we can slow the situation down, respond appropriately, and de-escalate that situation. So again, it's our supervision is engaged, our training is increased well beyond the minimum established by the state of California. Our technology is a, uh, tool that we're using to provide our officers with the best information that they have possible. And here's the last one. And this is not quantifiable in terms of statistics, but it is perhaps the most important one. We are hiring servants. So in the law enforcement profession, a long time ago, law enforcement officers were hired on their ability to quote-unquote be warriors. We are no longer hiring people based on that standard. We are looking for guardians. We are looking for people who want to provide a service to the community. And if necessary, they have to be able to do the things that a police officer might have to do. But that is not the priority for us in our hiring standard right now. So we take a, um, you know, there was a prior conversation tonight about commissions. We are trying to hire good human beings and train them to be competent members of the police department. Um, and that is the biggest cultural change that you could see within our organization. So it's no longer hiring somebody that we know can physically take care of himself or herself in every situation. We're hiring people who are gonna be better critical thinkers, who are gonna use their brains. And, and every time, every time I have to speak on police department issues, I am going to stress that our personnel is our strength. And so it's those four categories. I'm not gonna say that these are a direct translation to what Mr. Kim is presenting here, but I am going to say it plays a significant part, part of the change in numbers of claims and payouts, uh, since 2015, 2016.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
Please proceed.
And so, so these are intangibles, what I call, that the actuaries, when they're determining the premium rates for 16 different cities, do not consider because we have an advantage of a small city and our own police department. And we know their internal workings and we know that there's a cultural difference from how police behaved maybe 20 years ago. And, uh, to, just to show you the number of claims, look at this category of number of claims. In 2004, 2005, it was 111. Then you'll see 75, 76, 84, 83, 92, 83, 110, 119, 102. And this is fiscal year 2014, 2015, which the chief mentioned there was change in the culture of the police department. Drops down to 10, 2014, 2015, then 19, 26, 19, 18, 28, 21, and 9, last fiscal year. And we're in this current fiscal year, so we don't have the tallies for that yet.
What's your recommendation?
So I'm not gonna recommend anything. I want the council to vote on this because there is a risk in going to, it sounds great, we're gonna save, um, 1.3 million a year in annual premiums. But we would need a larger reserve because we can't predict the future. You, you know, we could have catastrophic event. We could have a wrongful death kind of lawsuit where we would, there's potential payout of millions. So, um, you, we would need to reserve a liability reserve of about 6 to 8 million per year in case of something happens that we're able to cover up to 2, 2 million self-insurance per claim. Anything over that, of course, is covered by commercial carriers. So this is at the end of my presentation, I want, I'm asking the council to take a vote on this, whether you do want to take the step and increase our self-insurance up from 500,000 to 2 million. The benefit is reduction in our premium by 1.3 million per year. But you also have the risk of covering up to 2 million per claim. And the, and the reserve, 6 to 8 million would carry over if there is no payout like that.
Yeah, through the chair, I'd like to, uh, well, one, if we're saving 1.3 million per year, it takes maybe a couple of years of that savings to cover a 2 million dollar claim versus, you know, it, it, it makes a lot of sense to me. I would like to, um, recommend that we, uh, we increase our deductible, uh, if that's the right word, from 500,000 to 2 million.
Yeah, and, and just to show you the other cities in the pool, as of fiscal year 21, 22, city of Adelanto, I presume that's a very small city. I don't even know where that is. It's, they have a self-insurance of 250,000 and last fiscal year, their premium was a little bit over half a million dollars. You know, a lot of these numbers depends on whether they have their own police department or not. City of Bell, 800,000. City of Downey is already self-insured up to 2 million dollars. And their annual premium is, is 1.9. Uh, city of Fullerton has 8 million self-insurance and their annual premium is 1 million. Hawthorne, this is fiscal year 21, 22, we're 500,000 at 2.38. This fiscal year, it went up to 3.1. City of Inglewood is 2 million self-insured. They pay a premium of 2.1 million. That was last fiscal year. Santa Ana is 3 million dollars. So I'm gonna ask the council, that's, if you have any questions, you're to answer.
Let's try to reach to a, let's try to figure this out.
To the chair, I have a question. So if we were in a catastrophic situation and we had to pay that 8 million dollars, how would we pay that money if we don't have it in reserves?
Okay, so I would, if we went to self-insurance of 2 million per claim, I would ask to set aside 6 to 8 million dollars annual budget as a reserve. Now, if we don't reach that, if there's no payouts of that nature, that would just carry over, is, it would remain in general fund. But let's say that we had a catastrophic event in which we would, a claim would pay over 2 million dollars. City would pay the first 2 million and the insurance would kick in. The excess commercial carriers would, would still maintain that. For, so from anything over 2 million up to cap is 35 million, the, the commercial carriers would have to pay for anything over 2 million.
So do you foresee that there's a possibility that we wouldn't be able to put that eight, to 6 to 8 million dollars in reserve every year?
I think based on our budget, um, I think we do have enough in the reserve, our current budget, um, to have that as a reserve. So we wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to approach this to council if, let's say, our budget has a reserve of, let's say, total of 10 million dollars. And that wouldn't, that wouldn't be feasible.
Thank you.
So basically, we have to set aside 6 to 8 million dollars that we have as a reserve for our current functions in order to, uh, cover this as opposed to using our insurance to be able to cover this. But we, we didn't be saving the 1.3, but it's a risk factor. It's like either you do it or you don't. So.
To the chair.
Go ahead and then.
There's really no way of projecting, making a forecast of potential lawsuits, right? Claims. We never know. This is a new year. This is the beginning of the year. This is January. It's my hope at staff retreat, city manager, that there's, um, a discussion about, about safety and being more, in a team, a team playing role to try and minimize as much as claims as possible. That's my hope with all department heads. But if there's gonna be a savings, that's kind of what I'm looking at. I mean, there's no way of projecting, you know, forecasting again. But if there's gonna be a savings and it's gonna be, um, a sense of an, of an initiative we're trying to make with the hopes of, of trying to, to, to save some, somewhere, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Patterson. This is a, a new fiscal year, so I don't think it would hurt, at least trying. It, it's not forever. However, it's also based off how many claims we receive. It, it's not forever. However, it's also based off how many claims we receive and or not. And if we don't have any claims, great, let's continue in that, in that model. But we need to have something for reserves just in case.
Yes, we do. And, and I um, I forgot to mention that. We have to let ICRMA know by January fifteenth of our decision to have the effect on the next fiscal year, which is July first.
Councilmember Montero?
Yeah, you know, I, 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 I do agree um that um we should go to two million and, and, and Make sure that we have the sixty-eight million reserve every year. Because when, and when you calculate all the numbers, you know, we have paid a lot of money to the insurance company that could have been saved. So um and I think like Ms. English said, you know, we, we don't know how much claim we'll have. So we have to make sure that we have that reserve. Um, God forbid, something happened that we would have that money there to pay for the claim of two million dollar per, per claim. So uh I'll agree that saving is very good. And I think the track record now is showing That we probably would save money down the road. So I agree.
Can I make a motion?
Uh, second, I do have another question though. Um, how, where'd you get that, that number of sixty-eight million from?
Well, so the way we've been budgeting is um because our self-retention was five hundred thousand per claim. Uh, we would set aside, we, every time city attorney's budget came up, we would put two million aside as settlements and judgments. So we, we counted about four um big payout cases per year. And we never, we hardly ever reached that, but we have that as a reserve.
And, and to the chair, let me say that um what the chief have explained to us is a wonderful uh technique Of those four categories. So I wanna commend him and his department uh for doing those. Because I think um down the road, you know, those things are going to make sure that every department fall almost the same mentality. About, you know, training and how to deal with people and with compassion. And I think the police department have shown That uh they've been doing outstanding jobs. So I wanna commend them again for that.
I think you make sure you work with the treasurer on how to, what to do with that money. Someplace where it's liquid, but also earning a competitive rate of return.
Absolutely. It was, it's budgeted as a lib, so you're gonna see a huge increase in city attorney budget. But it's not a money that is gonna be readily, readily spent. It could be invested and you could earn interest.
Got it. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
Okay, it's getting a little late. So uh, we do have two additional items and uh this looks like pretty good items. But uh just, let's try to get through it just so we can go take care of business. We have a, we have a ba, uh closed session too. Item uh number nineteen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am proposing a woman's, I'm sorry. Sorry. So um I am proposing a meet and greet. And the purpose of this meet and greet is for the newly elected council members to go out into the community. We wanna meet our uh residents where they're at. And so I wanted myself, Dana, Marie, um and also our intern chief To go out into the community and introduce ourselves um at the parks to each homeowners association. And let them know that we've been elected and that we're here to support them. Um also, if the other council members would like to attend. Um but also to share with them some of the wonderful things that our police department Um has done and continue to do so that our community is aware of all of the things that we do. Um I have to say during the election, when I was door knocking and I talked about some of the things that our city did, not everybody is aware. So this is an opportunity for us to go out into the community. Um and I like to say, meet them where they're at and just introduce ourselves and Improve our community relations with, with our city. We've been in COVID for the last couple of years. And so now we have an opportunity to go and meet and engage with our uh residents. So this was a suggestion and I think our residents would be very happy to see all of us Um there and maybe answering their questions and engaging with them.
To the chair. I think it's a great idea, a new elected official tour. So uh I think that's a great spectacular idea.
To the chair. Uh, uh, Ms. Manny, can you be more, more specific? How this thing would be operate? Are you talking about maybe going to the uh each homeowner association meetings or there is a special?
So we're, so I was suggesting that we go to the parks in our city. We would um put out notification to the residents and then we would go to the park. And the reason I suggested the park is because it's an opportunity to show some of the residents, the improvements That we've done in the parks. And then also, some people may still be a little um concerned about COVID. So being outside and being at our parks is a way where not only can they come, but they would also bring their kids Um to engage with us. And we would do it um every Saturday, the last Saturday, um from eleven to one o'clock. And, yes, did I answer your question?
Yes, so, so Saturday, so the last Saturday of, of the month?
Yes.
So, so you're going to five different parks?
Absolutely. All of the parks um in our city.
So ten parks.
Yes, so we would keep going until.
The major parks, right? The major.
So you're talking?
Well, yeah, so we would keep going until we completed all of those areas. Cause one of the things I recognize is not all of the areas have homeowners association. And we don't wanna um miss out on engaging with any neighborhood. So that's why I think just going to all of the parks and who's ever is closest to that particular park. Uh, we can engage them.
So you're talking about Boja Park, uh Ramona Park, uh Holly Glen Park, no, uh Eucalyptus Park.
Absolutely.
Zella Davis Park.
Absolutely.
Uh Memorial Center and then Dodi, Dodi have the park there.
Yes.
How do you plan on notifying, how do you plan on notifying the uh, the community?
Uh mailing out a postcard, um saying, inviting them um through um Direct mail.
How much you think that all of that will cost?
A hundred and forty-four dollars um for each area. So when you go through direct mail, I learned this. Yeah, I learned this campaigning, direct mail. Um, when you send this out, you're just only doing that particular area at a time. And it's just a simple flyer. Come and meet, you know, your um council members and your intern uh chief.
So uh can, can I suggest that uh that Saturday should not be concise with when the staff have a three days weekend?
Absolutely.
I do know how Fri, some Fridays you guys are off. So uh, so, so make sure that that Saturdays is not one of those days that they have three days weekend, okay?
Okay. Well, I mean, we can alternate when we check the calendar. Um, city manager, if you could just check in to make sure that those don't um conflict.
Absolutely, I will.
And one.
To the chair.
Sorry.
I think you proposed to say something.
Yeah, I was going to ask our city attorney, uh if three council members show up, is that is a Brown Act violation?
If you discuss uh future city business, it, it would, and that, you, you just read my mind. It's, that's why I just wanted to caution. If there are three council members there, uh please avoid discussing city, current city business or future city business. So to, so be mindful of the Brown Act.
Okay, what about um the chief um just sharing some of the wonderful things that the city has done? Like um some of the uh programs that they have where they could come and volunteer Or whatever projects they have or the intern programs, the things that the city has done. Is that a problem?
That should be fine.
Okay.
To the chair. So, you know, the, the police has the community trailer, right? That, that, that's, that's, I'm sure it would be helpful, cause it's, it's um, it's mobile, it could be parked. And so it could be a collaborative, right? But let me, let me just um make mention, cause what I was gonna say earlier was every council member has their style. And everyone has a way of how they work. I know that there's still some, some employees in the city, in city departments that don't know you're a council member. That you're the city treasurer and you're the city clerk or you or myself, cause this has happened all the time. So I went with Vaughn Norris to department, to department, to introduce myself. So he was with me. I wasn't doing this alone. So that's the whole purpose of getting to know your departments and getting to know, so that people recognize you by your face, right? Just last month, I went down to go talk to Kimberly Mack at the housing department and none of those people knew who I was. And I've been here since forever and then twenty twenty, right? So that, that was my purpose for saying, you know, um meeting greets are important, including your main departments here at city hall.
And thank, and thank you for saying that. Um I was fortunate that uh our city manager did take me around To meet several, uh to meet the staff. And I did encounter folks that didn't know who I was. Um, and they were talking to me and they didn't realize that I was the newly elected, so. Um, and the reason that prompted this was because, you know, I was in the city and I'd see people and they say, well, did you win? Did you win? Who won? Who won? So, and just hearing that prompted me to say, you know, I think it's important Um that we get out there and, and, and let folks know who we are and, and the work that we're doing. Um to kind of change our reputation as we don't do anything. Um, some of the people may feel that way. And so this is a way to engage and just make our community aware That we're out here working really hard um for our residents.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Can you move on to item twenty?
Yeah. So item twenty is I'm proposing a women's commission. And the reason that I'm promoting, promoting, uh proposing a women's commission is to focus on health equity. Uh, I wanna focus on mental health. Uh because of COVID, mental health used to be a conversation we didn't have. Now it's at the forefront of our conversation. Um also, I wanna talk about uh just women health and in general. With this commission, it will focus on um empowering women, focusing on the issues that women have to deal with. And so uh I would love if my colleagues would support me on uh having a women's commission.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, no problem. Do you, what staff member would um oversee that commissions?
Um, I am thinking parks and recs, but I would definitely love myself and, and uh councilwoman English To uh oversee it.
And that's why I was gonna ask this, the city attorney, uh if, if we create this women's commission, because you have a specific goal And objective for it, right? So to see if you would be the chairman of this committee, so by then it would be like much more like an ad hoc committee Instead of a com, of a commission.
So if we were to form a formal commission, I would need some assistance in terms of what kind of uh Information you want in the bylaws, how often you would wanna meet, things of that nature. Or if it's an ad hoc commission where it's a just, it's a temporary commission where.
No, it, it would be a permanent commission to focus on um women's issues, one in particularly. Uh well, uh several, mental health, uh physical health, infant mortality. Um, you know, all of those things that women have to deal with every single day. Uh, you know, some of the things we would do have where women would get mammogram testing. Or uh they would get mental health support um through resources that this would um offer. They would, you know, get information about exercising. This is a whole fully organized um commission that will support all those things. Mental and physical to support women and the issues that women have to deal with on a day-to-day basis.
Both part, both part depression is when the big one.
Definitely depression. And again, as I mentioned before, because of COVID, a lot of women experience trauma. They experience depression and there, there, women didn't know that those type of resources were available through their insurance. Where your insurance paid for you to get, you know, support, mental health support. And so these are some of the things that we would share and have discussions and symposiums and Uh those type of things where we would be pouring into our community and, and uh making them aware of the resources That our city offers. We have a lot of nonprofit organizations that do a lot of work um in the city that work for women That they may not be aware of. So to bring those two together, I think would be a benefit to our residents.
To the chair. Can, can I make a suggestion? I think it's a great idea. But to start it immediately, I would.
No.
No, no, hold on a second. I would recommend maybe to form an immediate ad hoc committee that you and Ms. English can do. And then transition into the commission, right? Because then you can start doing stuff immediately as an ad hoc. And then work with the city attorney to create that bylaws and goal and objective for the commission. Because you, it might take you three, six months to get uh appointed a commission. Because you know, you, you, cause you might gonna need maybe three or five people not commissioned. So if you create the ad hoc first and then you can start immediately doing, implement some of these ideas and then transition to the, a full commission. That's my suggestion.
I'm uh on board with this completely. Um but that would be a good idea. So in the meantime, the city attorney can take a look and see what the, uh what a commission, who can comprise a commission? Can two elected officials be on there? My gut, I don't know. I don't know. It, maybe? Or uh maybe it has to be fully five members of the community, so. Um, but if you start off as an ad hoc committee, you can get all that stuff uh ironed out. And then if you choose to move on and based on what the information is, then you got your, you have your information ready to go.
Can start immediately.
Transition. And you can define the issues that you wanna cover.
I wanna make sure we um do something uh for Mother's Day. So I want us to be prepared for that.
So the recommendation with ad hoc commission is really recommended Because the, the legal distinction is that ad hoc commission does not have to abide by the Brown Act. Whereas if you form a, a full formal commission by resolution, you have to have an agenda posted seventy-two hours. And all the full Brown Act applies, so.
Yeah, that's what my suggestion was because, you know, it, it, it'll take time.
Actually, um that's, I'm not trying to take away from the formal commission. You might find that that way you might be able to put things in action even quicker.
Yes.
So just, you know, but we can call it, we can put it on the website and we could call it a woman's committee, commission. Ad hoc. With a side note, there's a footnote, that's an ad hoc, but it could still appear as such.
Yeah, because we can vote to have, you know, mammogram over here, you know.
Like right away.
Right away, okay? Or workshops.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, councilwoman. Uh, we all support a great idea.
Can I just add real quick? Vaughn, if you could just add that as part of a city event when the time comes for the women's Mother's Day event? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's good that you anticipated that.
Also, I'm sorry, to the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we also, city manager, um look into budget for the Mother's Day event? Like, can we get funding for Mother's Day?
So I'm looking. Just find it out, find it out.
But sometimes, you know, each council does the, you know, fundraising for those events too.
I can do that too. We, we can do that, right?
Yeah.
Why is everybody looking at each other? Weird. These are weird. I'm just kidding. Um, okay, let's, we have a closed session. We need to go through these la, uh last minute reports from individuals here on the dice. Go ahead, Ms. Treasurer. Do you have a report? Anything you just want to say hi or thank you, whatever you'd like to say. Closing statements.
Um, first, let me say thank you, everyone, for taking the time to come out tonight and be a part of this meeting. I look forward to working and being supportive to all my new colleagues. Um, I'd like to say, uh, I went to the staff luncheon that the city had and I, again, I want to commend everyone. I was so surprised, but not yet surprised to see so many people with more than five years to, all the way up until like twenty years of service with the city, so. Again, I, I'd like to congratulate some of those staff members who've been around so long, uh, working for the city. Um, I did want to say it was good to be a part of the toy drive, uh, the toy giveaway. Um, and to see all the kids' faces picking their toys and being out there again with, uh, the community and talking to some of the parents and so many of them were grateful for, you know, some of the gift cards they received and the bike raffles. So it was really nice to be out and a part of that. Um, I was also one of the judges for the home, uh, Christmas home decorating contest. Uh, and so congratulations to those, uh, houses or families that placed and, um, thank you for participating. There were a lot of houses that we saw that weren't part of the contest, so I encourage some of you had really beautiful homes, so please participate, you know, this upcoming Christmas in 2023. It would be good to see more participation in that. Um, yeah, that's really it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. City Clerk?
I'm excited about the women's commission. That's all I have.
Okay, good. Excellent. Um, hey. Uh, an ad hoc, an additional ad hoc committee member, maybe?
Yep.
Okay, so you see, I, I mean, I'm not trying, you know, again, but it makes it easier for more people that you wouldn't expect to participate.
They got four members already, see?
Who was the fourth? You, you're part of it?
No, uh, Ms. English, I can be part of it because I know a lot of things about the women's health. I have four sisters and, you know, I have a back, background on health and education counseling, so.
Right.
I don't discriminate.
Councilwoman Manny?
I was gonna recruit Diana Bagder-Hyde.
Yeah, but we gotta get some more people from the, we could have seven members. Yeah, go ahead.
So I wanted to share with you, I received the, uh, email. And we have a resident who lives at twenty-five fourteen West one hundred and fif- fifteenth place. She is turning a hundred and eight. And she's having, she's having, her name is, um, Ms. Bailey, and she's having a celebration on Sunday, February the fifth, from eleven and three, and she would love for the city council to come and celebrate her. I'm sorry, Ms., uh, Mrs. Missouri Billingsley. And I bought a flyer, but there is a cost of eighty dollars, um, to attend her birthday bash. So I will be attending, um, this and it would be great if, uh, someone else could go and help her celebrate being a hundred and eight years old.
Wow.
Where's it at?
What day and time?
It's in, it's in Long Beach, Sunday, February the fifth, twenty twenty-three. So I have this and I'll give it to the city manager and he'll give, he can, uh, distribute to you and give you a copy of it.
Thank you.
And then, um, also, I wanted to just talk about an idea that I was thinking, uh, called Love Points for our employees. It's an employee program and basically when, one of the things that I noticed is our city manager has sent out an email, um, saying thank you to the staff and I noticed that he sends out a lot of congligatory, um, emails when they do a good job. So I was just thinking that if we had a Love Points program, that the city manager could possibly give love points to the employees and then maybe they could take that and buy, um, once they get a certain amount of points, they could buy city, uh, items. So it's just an idea and I was just wondering if maybe the city manager can look at it and, you know, um, maybe give me some feedback on, on that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, uh, yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, um, I had a meet and greet, uh, with my colleagues and it was so much fun and I just want to say thank you all so much. Um, to the city staff, police department and also my council, uh, colleagues for making that day so special. It felt so great to participate and I do apologize for making folks work out. Thank you.
It was fun. Thank you. All right, uh, councilmember Patterson, and thank you, sir, for, uh, backing me up as mayor pro temp for this last year. Thank you so much, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and well, it's quite an experience. I appreciate that opportunity. Uh, let's try to be brief. I want to thank the community for coming out, making voices heard, participating in the process and just, you know, just being involved. It was happening in your city. I want to thank staff for all of your hard work and your commitment. I want to thank the Haggardys for, uh, being our Santa and Mrs. Claus over the holidays. Uh, they, they worked hard, uh, in the city. I've thrown out three guys, here up to four events, um, five events. And throughout the community, it's just awesome though. It's something that I, I know I appreciate. We have a community cleanup day coming up, um, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And it's also, it gonna have, um, paper shredding and e-waste collection. Now, talk a little bit about the history of this event. Originally was, uh, uh, e-waste collection and paper shredding kind of event with the Republic Services was something that, uh, was an event that partnered with the treasurer's office back in the day with, uh, Terry Lubinak when he was the city treasurer. And, uh, when I came on as treasurer, I, I didn't really kind of participate in it at all. And, um, and during the pandemic or coming out the pandemic, I know I, I helped to encourage, you know, community cleanup day, uh, because there was a lot of, you know, complaints about, about that during the pandemic and, you know, for a lot of different reasons. And so I'm glad that we have this kind of big, uh, event and I like to invite the, the treasurer to participate in, um, kind of organizing this event moving forward and kind of bringing it back to the treasurer's office. And of course, I'm excited to, to also help in, in, in that process. But, uh, Saturday, Saturday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, eight AM to one PM, meeting at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center for the community cleanup event. Um, so it's, it's definitely, um, yes, continue to, to, to work to keep our, our city clean and pretty. Let's see, a couple of other things. I do have a question though. We had a, it was proposal of, you know, a non-council member, uh, being on some of these committees and stuff like that. I, I want to know, city attorney, could you comment on, could staff also sit on any of these committees? And you can send me an email about this. And also if, uh, uh, our city clerk or city treasurer could sit on these committees and if, you know, and if that's even appropriate or not. So just kind of curious of who else could sit on these committees outside of council since that, that subject, uh, was brought up. Um, Mr. City Manager, some time ago I had asked if there was possible that we can kind of create a dog park in the city. Uh, I remember what, last time I went campaigning and door knocking, I got barked at quite a bit. Uh, I think probably seventy-five percent of our, 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 uh, residences, homes, apartments, doesn't matter, there, there's a, there's a puppy there. And I, I think our community would appreciate that if that's possible, that we can kind of, you know, find some resources and some funds to put that together. And then also, um, uh, EV charging. Uh, I know we have some EV chargers across the street at, at the Marriott, but I know there's also some, uh, funds that are out there, uh, for cities and municipalities to build, uh, our own EV chargers throughout the community. Uh, is that something you could also look into, uh, where resources might exist? I know, um, Edison, is it? Is it Edison? I don't know. Well, you know, what, what are-
The Clean Power Alliance is going to put some money into EV charges for challenged communities, so. We, I'm waiting for them to put the, the, uh, P out for us to apply for it.
I know there's probably a few different organizations that have some cash for that, so we can look into, to doing that. And also even look into some solar canopies as well. You know, I know, um, I think our, 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 one of our schools do this, right?
Yeah, the ten Hawthorne School District has.
Hawthorne School District has?
Yeah, parking, parking structure also.
Yeah, so we can look into doing some of the same thing at some of our facilities, as well as a way to kind of generate some electricity, offset some expenses and things like that and provide some shade to people that are visiting our facilities. Um, that'd be great.
Let's have, uh, Agbada's working on that already.
Thank you. I am aware.
Because I keep pushing Agbada to do more so.
Let's let him finish right here. You guys over here.
Thank you.
You're good?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good? Okay, okay. Well, okay, that's a, a good transition to Councilwoman Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, bear with me, okay? Uh, again, you know, I want to say thank you, uh, to all the residents that are listening at home and that come through here to the dais. It was a very constructive dialogue today, so thank you all my colleagues for positive discussion because a lot of good stuff is coming along, so thank you very much. I want to say, you know, thank, uh, holidays, you know, it was great, um, especially during, uh, Christmas, a lot of kids receive toys and gift cards, so, um, I want to say thank you to all of those who participated and contribute towards that donation. Uh, especially the Hawthorne President's Council, you know, Chevron Corporation, uh, a lot of, uh, business who contribute money, you know, the Women's Club. So, um, believe it or not, you know, I s- I spent about nine thousand dollars in gift cards, uh, during holidays, so to give to the families. So thank you to all of those who donated. Um, again, uh, thank you, the staff, you know, Vaughn, thank you for that staff appreciation. Uh, like, um, Ms. Pointe Asta said, you know, some people have thirty years, thirty-five years working for the city, so that is very committed. So, and I want to say thank you for that. That was a wonderful lunch. Um, and thank you for keeping us updated on your activities and all the departments, you know, these reports is very good and, and well-received, you know, because it shows us, uh, the work at hand. And also the code enforcement, I want to say thank you again for giving us a weekly update on the code enforcement, uh, for their job on the streets, so I appreciate that very much. Again, I have to say, you know, all the departments been doing great. I appreciate all of them. Uh, especially, you know, city attorneys to this, to the, uh, chief for the Hawthorne Police Department, you know, again, show us, uh, the carrot of our police department is about saving lives. So thank you for that very much and I appreciate all the work you guys been doing out there. Uh, just some quick announcement, um, the Hawthorne Lions Club, uh, with Inglewood Lions is doing, um, a vision screening, vision and hearing screening on, uh, Saturday, uh, from eleven AM to three PM, but it's going to be at the corner of Market Street and Manchester in Inglewood. So it's a, it's a partnership between the Hawthorne Lions Club and the Inglewood Lions Club. They're gonna do free vision and hearing screening on Saturday at the, uh, Market in Manchester, right there where there is the flea market happens on Saturday. And also, uh, our Hawthorne Historic Society is doing, uh, games at the museum, so, uh, you, uh, welcome to go play games. So, uh, the next one is on January eighteenth at six PM, six to nine PM. And I've been inviting all of those, my supporters, my supporters and, and friends, uh, for my celebration of achievement for, uh, of last year and for this past four years, so on, for Friday the thirteenth at six PM. I'm cooking prime ribs and salmon, so you all invite to be there at the Hawthorne Moose Lodge, uh, one three two one two, uh, South Inglewood Avenue. Uh, you know, like I said, you know, friends, staff, you're all invited to be there. Um, but please RSVP to that number on the flyer, right? That is three one zero six eight six five four six four. Uh, again, three ten six eight six five four six four. RSVP by Wednesday because I have to make sure that I'm counting, uh, for the food, right? Because I already have about sixty-five reservation already, so.
I'm coming.
All right.
You never responded to my text, so.
I did. I did reply to your text. Check it out. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, if, uh, when we come back, uh, if you can adjourn the meeting, um, for these two people who die, uh, Ms. Winters, right, that we, Miki Winters, that used to be a Parks and Recs director, and L. Richard, L. Richard, Ramona Track, he passed away.
What?
Okay, so Ed, yes.
What?
L. Richard died.
Oh, man, that's unfortunate.
So, and actually they're having service, memorial service, and thanks to Mr. Dickium over there, tell us that, uh, they're having service on the twenty-first of January. Yeah, uh, eleven o'clock is for the Ms. Winters and then at two o'clock is, uh, L. Richard.
Thank you for mentioning that.
And, and, and I would ask even for us to send Barry a certificate of some, because, you know, L. Richard was one of the commission. Uh, and he was a very advocate for the Ramona Track for all this year, so, uh, we need him a death gratitude for his service. Thank you.
Absolutely. Wow, that's unfortunate. That's really, really, really unfortunate, but, um, yeah. Okay, go ahead. Mayor Pro Temp?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let me just recognize again, Chief, um, for the presentation today and, um, kudos and congratulations to all those, um, police officers and staff uh, on their, um, award, awarding and recognition this evening. Um, I also want to thank everyone that participated and helped with, uh, the toy giveaway here at City Hall. It was very successful. There was a great turnout to the Haggardys. Thank you so much for your participation, your volunteerism. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. Uh, I want to do something for you. I know there was five of those events that you attended. I just want to make sure that you get something in appreciation, and so I'll make sure to do that myself. Thank you so much. Um, to staff and everybody that assisted in that, park staff, everyone. Um, and, and also our elected here on the dais. Thank you for your participation and help. It was greatly, uh, appreciated and noticed, so thank you greatly. Um, I wanted to make mention that, um, utility prices are going up next month. The gas company is increasing our utilities. Um, I'd like to ask city manager to see if we could bring Southern California Gas Company here to council to provide a presentation and to give an overview as to how much utility cost is going up and how, um, they have services and programs to assist those that, uh, are going to be in need of, uh, you know, additional resources to help pay their utility bills. So that's very important and I want to make sure we have a representative here to, um, provide us that and moreover, answer questions. Um, there was, I, I, I went and I participated in all the, um, holiday events that were happening and took video and put it up, you know, downloaded it upstream that. Everybody, all the kids, it was great to see all the dance classes that were performers, uh, all the kids and, um, I'd like to see how we could maybe ask Wreckin Parks to come and provide us, like, just a snippet of all the activities that are taking place at the Wreckin Parks right now, what classes are being offered for what age groups and, you know, just so that everyone could see it on channel twenty-two. If, uh, you have, um, a child or a grandchild that you want to have them participate in a class, that would be great to, to see that. And I believe for Hawthorne residents, the class is a little bit different than those that are not Hawthorne residents. Um, I think that's important. I just want to say thank you to all of those that contributed to the toy giveaway, all your contributions, all your efforts, uh, your volunteerism, your participation, and this is not a first-time thing. You've been totally giving each and every time, and so I can't say enough. And there are a lot of organizations, a lot of groups, a lot of private, uh, donors, a lot of public-private partnerships, and so I just want to make sure that I recognize everyone and including businesses here in Hawthorne that provided, um, and those, um, alike, so thank you for that. Um, I'm not gonna be, you know, redundant. Um, thank you for the information on liability insurance. I think that was very important. Um, councilmember Patterson, thank you for that. Um, I think we still need to look at earthquake insurance too. I think that's important. We haven't had that discussed in a while. So that's important for, um, catastrophic events that we have no control over. However, we need to make sure that we have a city hall standing to be able to continue business, and so I want to make sure, um, we're covered there. Uh, and so I'd like to see that. Um, everything that was discussed here today, good conversations, good, um, opportunities to review the reorganization of the council- Um, everything that was discussed here today, good conversations, good, um, opportunities to review the reorganization of the council. And providing new commission positions, or I should say, committee, uh, appointments. Um, thank you, Councilmember Manning, for your two items, uh, with the meeting greet and for the formation of a women's commission, which I, I believe is great. Um, two speakers today that provided handouts and other information, appreciate that. Um, and to my council colleagues for my appointment, Esmera Protem, thank you so much for unanimous, and unanimous vote. Look forward to supporting you all and the mayor here when you need me. Thank you.
High five. Good, thank you. I am gonna address, I'm gonna address one of the items.
Oh, I forgot.
Go ahead, but I'm.
I have a go back. I have a go back.
I'll give you the chance, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, some time ago, there was, um, an ordinance that was drafted to address panhandling. And, um, this was specific, the mayor's, uh, ordinance was specific. It had to do with panhandling during the time that you're at an ATM at the bank, trying to inquire your, your monies. And you have panhandlers, you know, around you, asking you for money. Uh, which could be very nervous seeing and scared and not a very secure situation. However, I want to go a little bit deeper than that. We currently have that same mentality and those same practices how- happening on our streets. It's happening on Hawthorne Boulevard and Imperial at the intersections there between Poyo Local. And Starbucks. They're actually physically getting into the street. When you're stopped at your stoplight and coming in and out of traffic, trying to get you to donate. And, which is a scary situation. It's not a safe situation, because if no one's paying attention, you're gonna take off when it's green. And Lord forbid that there's somebody in your, in the street that shouldn't be there. So, I'd like the police, I'd like the city attorney, city manager to please, please review what we can do legally. And, and, and within right and provide a, um, a no-no, actually, can't do that. And if you do do that, a hefty fine, which could be, I say, five hundred or more. So that the folks, you know, understand how important you can't do that. Also, at Ocean Gate, on Roche Crans and Ocean Gate, right, right at Ocean Gate. At the seventy-six gas station and the corner of T-Mobile, they're doing the same thing in Starbucks. They're coming out into the street where you're actually parked and panhandling. It's very scary situation, very scared, very scary. And, um, I'd like to bring back something in ordinance so that we could, um, finally nip this once and for all, please. Thank you. To the chair.
Well, there's a go back here and a go back there, but after this, after I finish, no more go backs. I mean, that, you know, you guys.
I just wanted to comment on what she said. Um, with that, do we have panhandling signs? In the city saying there's no panhandling?
You, you know, that, that, that's funny that you said that, because I know that we have, at least I think we have, no dumping signs with municipal ordinance. You know, s- no dumping with the municipal code on there. I, I don't see why not.
All we gotta do is put, put a sign at the entrances, on all the entrances into the city that just say that, and it's enforceable throughout the city. We don't need us.
There was a legal confidential that was, um, sent maybe a couple of years back. I'll go revisit that and provide the laws on that.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, could you, um, bring us an update to our fuel allowance ordinance? Or, uh, I think I was told we may not even have something on the books, if we can kind of bring an ordinance to the city council and have that, uh, updated. Consistent with, um, you know, inflation over, since it was initially, uh, uh, implemented.
Car allowance.
Fuel.
Allowance.
Yeah.
I'll look into both.
Yeah, okay. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, so that's good for everybody. All right, all right, because you, you know, you guys are something else here. It's cool, it's predictable. Go backs, Mr. Treasure, the city, okay, good. All right, guys, it's the end of day and we gotta just close this out and hopefully that meeting in the back's not gonna be too, too long. Um, so, look, we have the City of Hawthorne's Homeless Count twenty-twenty-three. Uh, it's gonna take on January twenty-fifth, the day after our council meeting. So, I really, we, I was hoping this would have been later, but, uh, we don't have enough time to actually discuss this, but I, I'm gonna have to bring this up now. Um, because I'm a big person that deals with data, okay? And I've had a discussion with, uh, one of my colleagues, um, about this specific issue. And, uh, in order to address the needs of our, uh, the homeless within the city bounds, we need data. And I think the homeless count specifically, you just go out and count. Hey, we got two-hundred-and-fifty. It's gonna be two-hundred-and-fifty again. I don't, I don't know how, how that's gonna, you know. There's nothing, there's no data, we don't know, have a profile. So, I need, I, I would like, I would feel more comfortable being able to address the issue and the needs. If we had specific data that we can create, uh, graphs with regards to age. Maybe the reason people are homeless, whether it's economics or, you know, something else, what the reasons are. Uh, open-ended questions, you know, gender, race, ethnicity, disabilities, uh, mental health status, et cetera. So that we can create the necessary cross tabs to be able to see what the profile of the people within. Our community is. If we, as our group of people are out there, this, the homeless count's purpose is just maybe to just to count literally, right? But af- as we move forward, um, if we could, uh, maybe agendize together with, uh, Councilwoman Manning, myself and her. Uh, if we could talk about and the whole of the council, coming up with how we can get that data so that we can have, uh. Uh, find the necessary resources. Up, I'll give you a minute or so just to kind of, because we did talk about this, ma'am. Go ahead.
So, um, if possible, uh, City Manager, I was wondering if we could reach out to, um, Behavioral Health Services. Um, there are another, there is a couple of other, uh, nonprofit organizations in our city that focus on. Of the homeless population, and I will reach out to them so that they could work with us on, uh, providing that data. Uh, for our city. I believe that because they service that population, they would have, uh, some of the. Information that the mayor is requesting. Um, I would also, um, want to include our, our homeless, uh, department to sit with us. Um, when we're strategizing as well, our internal, and see what kind of information that they have as well. In terms of collecting that data.
And, uh, I'm just gonna just keep it here though.
Through the chair, just a quick, quick thing.
It needs to be quick.
The data is available. The, uh, the LA County Lhasa, they, they the one who conduct this, uh, counts. And the count, uh, they have a form that they have to fill up. It's not just count one, two, three. So, they have all the statistics that you need. So, it's just, uh, for every city, they have the statistics. We just need to request that statistic, but it is available. It's because Behavioral Health Service doesn't have that statistic. The, the la- the, the, the one is LA County, uh, Homeless Authority. That we've been, they've been charging us money every day, po- through our tax money, right? So, so they have that statistics, okay? So, we can get that.
So, if that's the case, I would like to verify that. Let's, let's get that information for last year, still agendize that item, uh, for the discussion on this action discussion. On the homeless, homeless, uh, data in regards to the homeless, however you want to word that. Um, and let's get that and let's come up with graphs, let's come up with histograms, let's come up with, uh, uh, data. The, the necessary review of the graphs, because we might think that, um, we, hey, you know what? We need to go because they all got mental health problems. What if it's only like ten percent that we identify hacks, men- mental health problems? Maybe it's ninety percent that, uh, were, lost their job and all they need is the necessary training. But we're focusing on this specific side of the issue and not focusing on something else. We need to target what the issues are so that we can serve our, uh, so we can help our homeless, uh, brothers and sisters that are out there. Unhoused, homeless, whatever the correct term is at this point. Huh? You like the house? Okay, okay. Well, hey, you know what? You gotta talk to, gotta scold Vaughn, okay? All right. The homeless count. So, very, very important, guys, you know, so that we can get the number through the homeless count. Uh, if the homeless count is gonna provide this, then we got information for next year, but let's get the information for last, next, uh, last year. Can you get that for us within a couple of weeks, maybe? By the next meeting? In anticipation, thank you. And we'll look at it. Try to graph some stuff preliminary if you can, or maybe have some of the interns look at it and graph it out. Okay? The next item is the panhandling. Absolutely, I did bring something up, yeah, she referred to it as the mayor's, but we all voted on it. At the time, because everybody's just frustrated with the issue. We still have that going on. We still have that. The big one is, uh, for me, is people walking in the middle of the street. It's obvious scams. These people have been asking for money for their, for their mother that's in the hospital, uh, that she needs help. Two sisters walking up and down the streets, they've been doing it for like half a year, so like eight months or something. We also have another scam at the, at the different, uh, at the, at the. At the Costco. You know, obviously, people go in, they spend big money, so these people, it's the gypsies that play the violin and they're like asking for money. It's a recording, but it almost seems like they're playing it. Hey, guys, what else? No, it really is, guys, and it's, uh, and it's just, what else is it to call it, right? Money for funerals, the gypsies that do this whole violin, they have their, their, their partner and then a kid eating, you know, right next to them pitched up. And it's just the same, these, and these are organized scammers. These are not people who need help. They're playing and abusing of your guys' heart and concern and asking for money. That they don't need to pull out of your pockets because you deserve it. These guys should just get to work and find a damn job and stop, you know, exploiting people's hearts. Okay? Then we got, like you said, walking amongst the cars. Chief, if I'm walking in the middle of the street and I don't get off and I could do a repeat, am I gonna get a ticket or am I gonna get fined? If, if I'm just risking it and causing a danger, if, if I can get a ticket, those people should too, should too. We need to pers- it's not jaywalking, it's. All right, then let me just finish, Councilman Montero, let me just, no more interruptions, let me finish through my stuff, we gotta get out of here. So, we need to apply the same penalties that we, you and I would get, okay? And stop just moving people along. So, Chief, I really want to start seeing like tickets and those people not. Give them a good five-hundred-dollar ticket or a thousand-dollar ticket for whatever the fu- and they won't do it again. We can't just move people along, we need to give them the citations. Those people are, yeah, exactly, arrest them if you have to. Okay, that's causing a danger for those people driving through. I mean, it's, it's, it's tiring. And we need to kind of follow through with the panhandling and that specific action. Okay? Chief, can you kind of, we just, we're giving you the power to do that. The residents have been complaining. Okay. All right, so this other one, guys, uh, people who've been driving up and down on north, uh, north and south on Hawthorne Boulevard. Between El Segundo and, uh, Rosecrans, when you go up and down, they have crosswalks. You know, you can cross, there's not always a light or anything that goes red and then green. So, you're at the mercy of the people seeing you ready to cross. And the, uh, the yellow flashing light is not enough to be able to tell you if there's somebody ready to cross. So, that's an act, right? You guys have seen that. So, I just want to let you guys know that I did talk to our chief and, uh, we're relaying the information and, uh, we're gonna see a change in that. Those shrubs are gonna be moved, those bushes are gonna be moved, so that you can see if there's somebody ready to cross from the median. Over to the, uh, to the opposite side of Hawthorne Boulevard, right? You see, you know what I'm talking about, right, sir, right? On both sides, all the way down. It's like you're coming up on that thing, it's like you don't know if somebody's there and you don't know if to slow down completely, stop or go. So, it's just accidents waiting to happen. We need to be proactive when it comes to that, right? So, uh, just let us know what you found, Chief, and Akbar and, and, uh, Mr. City Manager. And let's just be proactive. We don't want any accidents to occur of, of that nature.
Through the chair?
Sir.
Uh, tree trimming starts tomorrow for that area.
Excellent, see? That's good. Thank you. Thank you very much for taking a quick action on that. Damn, that was like ten seconds? That's good news, though, right? We talked about it before. Everyone like mentioned it. Then, also, uh, Akbar's not here, but, uh, this is other, another concern. We need to, City of Hawthorne, I mean, man, look how much the prices of the homes in the valley, land prices and everything in this damn town. You know, it's, look how much, you know, but we need to reflect. When people get off of the freeways, they need to see, okay, I'm entering into like golden territory right here. So, what kind of perception do you think people are gonna get? All those people going to the SoFi Stadium, right? All those people, you know, going to SoFi Stadium, staying in the city. If they get off on Hawthorne Boulevard going west, the Hawthorne Boulevard exit off of the one-oh-five west. And seeing all these shrubs and all these like underwear and clothes and half, half a tent. Uh, like in the, in, and the bushes on the lower right. What is that, what kind of a, you know? They don't, they don't care that, they're going to turn left into Hawthorne. They don't care that that's on the Lenox side. That's the exit people take to go to, come over here to the City of Hawthorne. Ma'am, you see, you know what I'm talking about, you know what I'm talking about, right? So, you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Higerty. So, um, I would like, Mr. City Manager, um, and in coordination with our chief and Akbar. To please take a look at having the Caltrans reimburse us, along with some of the other reimbursements that they're doing. To be able to just do a clean sweep, just take out all those darn shrubs, just let it be just whatever the heck's left over after you take out all your shrubs. Just, um, there's no room for anybody to hide or do anything, so you're gonna cut all the vegetation from that site. So that, uh, we can easily, uh, prevent people from congregating there and try to set up shop. A lot of the homeless that we've ha- had, uh, we, now we have a place for them to stay. It's opening up real soon. But that's where people go and have some illicit activity too, and it's just a, I hate to say it, a pigsty right there. So, we need to make sure that we keep our city beautiful and that's, my priority is to the residents first. And that's, uh, wh- what we need to do when it comes to cleaning up that spot. Can you give me, uh, something with, can you give us something by the next meeting, sir?
Yes, I'll have staff work on that.
That one in particular, and then we could move to look at some others that kind of look really kind of messed up. All right, guys, so, um. Yeah, yeah, that panhandling stuff is pretty bad. So, yeah, when we come back, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll return it for, in honor of Ms. Ms. Winters and Mr. Richards. All right, so guys, let's take a look. So, the people are in the audience, we're gonna go in the back. When we come back, all we're gonna do is just like, uh, adjourn quickly. So, if you guys want to head home, they would probably be, you know, okay, you're not gonna miss much when we come out. We have one closed session tonight. Madam Clerk, can you go through this?
Closed session, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to California Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six dot eight. Five-four-nine-five-four dot five B, properties. Approximately point nine-one acres of land with two-thousand forty-six square feet buildings located at one-three-zero-zero-seven Yukon Avenue. And, uh, APN four-zero-five-zero dash zero-one-four dash zero-two-zero-zero-two. Approximately point one-seven acres of land located at one-three-one-zero-zero Yukon Avenue. APN four-zero-five-three dash zero-zero-one dash zero-zero-one. Approximately two-point-one-six acres of land located at one-two-five-zero-zero Euclid Avenue. APN four-zero-four-one dash zero-zero-nine dash nine-zero-zero. Agency negotiator, Vontray Norris, City Manager, other party, one-three-zero-zero-seven Yukon Avenue Hawthorne LLC. And one-three-one-zero-zero Yukon Avenue Hawthorne LLC, under negotiation price and terms of payment.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, is there any member of the public that wa- wants to address item twenty-one? Okay, seeing none, if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. I was gonna, uh, let you know that when, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Mayor Protem raised English, she said in the, you guys remember how she would go? You know, nobody can match her speed, but, you know. But it was intentional, we could understand it, but, you know.
Well, is too fast for you?
No, I'm just saying that, you know...
I'm fast, just checking.
No, I didn't mean that. You're doing a great job and I appreciate working with you back and forth on this, okay? So, uh, it's, everything's good, it was great, a pleasure to, uh, work with my colleagues today, let's go to the back.
where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The Organics Law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1st, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed, and talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
As met in closed session, and we've been called back to order at 10 o'clock, I believe it is, yeah, 10 o'clock, 10:03. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, met in closed session, report was provided to City Council. The City Council have given direction to the agency negotiator, there's no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And we will be adjourning this meeting in honor of Mr. Al Richards, Alan Richards, and Ms. Winters, who was a, both of them were members of Commissions here in the city. Parks and Rec's director, so she was a Parks and Rec's director here, and Mr. Al Richards was a commissioner and longtime resident for the city of Hawthorne. So let's just do a quick moment of reflection. Okay, may they rest in peace. This meeting is adjourned at 10:04.